It's too bad, Chris is usually good at the.
Hi, everybody, and welcome to the planning board meeting of February 26, 2014. Tonight, we have Bob Watts, myself, I'm Harry Locatilia, Tilly Evangelista. Howard Snyder is our account planner. Administrative assistant is Wendy Beaumont. And being 7:10 PM, I'm going to call the planning board meeting to order. First thing on the agenda is the minutes of January 22nd and the minutes of February 12th. Can I have a motion?
I move pending discussion that we accept the meeting minutes of the, what's the first one? The 22nd?
January 22nd and February 12th.
A vote here.
Sure. Want to take a vote? And is there a second?
There's a second.
Second to approve the minutes of January 22nd and February 12th of 2014. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Unanimously. Correspondence, Howard?
We have one. John Magliano is the person that recently purchased by Elm Street. And he requested that we be placed on the March 12th agenda for the planning board to discuss a citizen's petition. The Board of Selectmen haven't met and formally referred that to the planning board. So, once that occurs at the next meeting, a public hearing notice will be made and the citizen's petition can be held in an open public hearing forum.
Do we want to explain to Mr. Magliano that he's more than welcome to come, but it would be preferable that he came during the hearing that we have to hold?
Right, I've advised him of that.
Okay, so, you know, I mean, he's more than welcome, it's a public meeting, he can come to March 12th, but it may end up being later than that.
Well, I told him not to come on March 12th.
Oh, okay, doesn't it have to be like a two-week thing or something? 14 days for the planning board, for the selectmen to send it to the planning board, and then the planning board has to turn around, and we have to notice it for two weeks or something?
A week and two weeks away from a meeting.
Two weeks away from a, yeah, okay.
Most likely the 26th.
Because we're looking at April, right? Oh, maybe the 26th, it might squeak in it, yeah. If the Board of Selectmen hold a meeting to refer it to us.
Your meeting next Monday, correct?
Hope so.
Okay.
That timing might work out.
The, since Carrie is here, usually what happens is that when you get a citizen petition, immediately it goes right to the registrar, the town clerk's office, to verify those signatures. So, that's the first step.
That's been done.
That's been done.
Yeah.
And then it has to go to the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
The Board of Selectmen have to then refer it to the planning board.
In a formal way.
Right, 14, 14 days to do it after it's been received by the clerk or something, but whatever.
I thought one of the meetings that I heard you say that, or Mike say, that it was going to the town council first. And I couldn't get an explanation of why, you know? Is that, is that so?
I believe the talk might have been that everything on the one goes to council. And I hope they waited till after the hearing.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Let's move on to the vouchers. Can I get a?
Two vouchers are presented tonight, both being drawn off of established escrow accounts. Both received from the technical review engineer Larry Graham of H.L. Graham Associates.
And can I have a motion to pay the vouchers in the amount of $4,445?
Correct.
So moved.
So moved, Tilly moves it.
Second.
Second by Bob. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. We can start signing that. Just so everyone in the audience knows, we, we have a number of bylaw, proposed bylaw amendments tonight. To my knowledge, all of these have been noticed in the newspaper two weeks preceding. We're going to look at them as three, basically, there are three new bylaws that we need to deal with. A couple of amendments for definitions and word usage. And we need to amend the use regulation schedule. And we also have to look at another bylaw that is being proposed to be modified, an existing bylaw that's being proposed to be modified for accessory apartments. Looking at all of these, Howard, I know you've, you've taken great care to set these all up for us. And bear with me here, folks, I know we have numbered one through seven, but I think, I think it would behoove us.
In your packet is the updated cover for your request about who's supporting it.
Yep. Correct, correcting the sponsors of that, making sure that that's done. I just want to, maybe it seems like I'm going to take them out of order, but I think the best way to move forward tonight, start with solar, go to wind, go to marijuana, and then, at that point, go to the accessory apartment, and then drop back and do the first three. Because the definitions and the, the definitions include some definitions that lead back to these bylaws, so it's not really that we have the horse before the cart, we just have some horses up front that belong a little further back in the, I don't know, in the team or something, I don't know.
I think we understand what you're saying.
You get it? Great. Without any further ado, Howard, if you would be so kind, I'd like to open the hearing, the public hearing for the solar bylaw amendment, the solar energy facilities.
Well, the solar energy facility is actually a continuation. The wind energy facility is a newer.
Oh, okay, so it's a reopen, reopening the hearing of the solar energy.
For solar, an opening for.
Reopening solar, thank you. I think the best way to go through this, I think we can blow through this in a half an hour or 45 minutes if we just hit it. I think we can.
You think you can?
I think we can. I have a good feeling about it.
That'll be breaking records.
We're record breakers. We, this is the record-breaking planning board. We break records. We make them, we break them. And we make them again.
Right.
And we break them again.
And break them again if we have to.
You're pissed so hard to give you.
Oh, you need sticks, right? Let's pay the bills.
While you're doing that, I'll just note that the planning board has continued the public hearing on this bylaw since last fall without any new discussion September 11th. And the bylaw draft has been provided in the packet, has been done through 165-140. So, we don't need to go unless you want to start from the beginning again, but there hasn't been any discussion from section 141 to the end.
I, I went through it fresh, and I just had a couple of things. I'm sure other members, I see notations everywhere, Bob, I'm sure you have yours. Maybe the best thing to do would be to go through it in its entirety.
Right, thank you.
And then perhaps we could have the changes made up, we continue to another hearing night.
We should hold a second hearing date for all of these.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that would be.
Let's try to blow through it and make some corrections now. And with the goal being that hopefully we'll have a nice, clean, agreeable copy at the end of it for the continuation when we come back. And that can be a relatively quick approval recommendation, recommendation, excuse me, and report to the select board.
It's 12 pages.
So, let's, we've got some minute each. On the first page, 165, 135, excuse me, 136B, it says, "Any solar energy facility application may all, may also may, may also be subject to review by another town of Georgetown board." I think what we want to say is other town of Georgetown boards or commissions, right? You with me on that one?
Right, and you know what I question, too, is nowhere here was it mentioned that the electric manager be involved in?
Oh, I, I think it is after, Tilly.
After?
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's, let's move through it, and, and we'll find that, that section.
The municipal life department has a specific location in here about review.
Yep, yep.
Once it reaches the site approval, is that what you mean?
Yes.
Yep, we'll point that out later. I had a little bit of, again, how we have this all set up. The idea of this is it's as-of-right, and it's proposed to be as-of-right anywhere in the town, in any of the zoning districts. That, that was my understanding.
And if I can't hear you, just to correct you, as-of-right means somebody just can't go in and do it and get a building permit.
Absolutely.
There's certain oversight through the site plan approval process, but it means it's permitted in all the zoning districts.
It's a permitted use, but you need to come for a site plan approval.
Correct.
Now, the way, in my limited capacity, I'm looking at these, we're talking about solar installations. Basically, it's going to break down into two categories. The first category is someone that has a business or has a home, and they want to add to it. They want to use the power in their own facility, in their own homes for onsite. And I believe that's what's being referred to as an onsite solar energy facility.
Correct.
Okay? The other, that's, that's on the next page, Tilly, onsite solar energy facility. This is, we're in the definitions now, my apologies, we're in one, section 138, we're into the definitions.
Hold on a second now, but from the very beginning, what they're talking about here in the first paragraph is new ground-mounted solar. It doesn't say anything about anybody putting it on the roof or.
This bylaw explicitly does, does not have any oversight on, on roof installations, it's ground-mounted only.
Which is interesting, because I do see that for residential. Someone owns a home, they want to put a couple of solar panels on their roof, should be a relatively easy thing to do. However, I can picture a business with a flat roof that would cover their roof.
That's considered in here. It's for residential, solar, roof-mounted, is not considered in this bylaw.
Okay, so, if, what if I had a large industrial building, or I had a building, and it was a commercial building or an industrial building, and I wanted to put solar panels on the roof to generate power, not just for onsite, but generate enough to sell? That would be, then be considered a commercial solar energy facility?
Right.
Okay. And under the definition of commercial solar energy facility, at the bottom of page two there, I'm reading, "A ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation where the primary use is electrical generation to be sold to the wholesale electricity market." I think that you've hit the crux of it. Where in here, and I get it, believe me, a commercial solar energy facility, the first thing I would think of is someone that has several acres of land, the, a concern wants to rent the land or buy the land, use it to, they want to put solar panels out in the field, ground-mounted, perfectly understandable, a great business venture. That would be a commercial solar energy facility. And that fits this definition. It certainly does fit the definition that we're, we're talking about here. Now, what about, what about a business that wanted to put it on their roof, not just for onsite solar energy, which also is a ground-mounted sort of volts, solar voltac installation? But what about a facility, excuse me, a, a business that would want to put it on the roof exclusively to sell? Where would, where would that happen? Because my concern is that, and don't get me wrong, I don't want to prohibit this kind of activity, I want to encourage it. But I could see some problems where, the way this is written right now, I believe as a business owner, if I owned a business and a, at a building in Georgetown in this past, I believe I don't need a review. I can mount anything I want on my roof, as massive as I want, as high as I want, there's no oversight under this bylaw, as I read it. And I need you right now to tell me where, where that would be addressed.
Applicability under C.
Okay, where are we, Tilly, maybe you found it.
165, 137.
Yep, C.
Nothing in this section shall be construed to prevent the installation of accessory roof-mounted.
Solar voltac installations on residential structure. And I'm, I'm all in favor of that. If a homeowner wants to put panels on his roof, is there a roof? Absolutely, go for it. I think that should be as-right. I think that should just, probably just be the building inspector that would come there and say, you've got to sign off from the electric company, you have to sign off from the fire department, naturally, because these things make power. I mean, if there's a fire, at least, and it's in the day.
Where are those restrictions or requirements articulated?
Well, it should be here.
I mean, for a roof mounted, for a residential, where, this doesn't, this is really just.
The electrical code.
Is the building inspector inspecting the roofs now? We don't know, right?
For roof-mounted, he would be required.
Like three or four already done.
He did, he's doing that.
There's three or four already in town, so.
To get back to your question here, general provisions be, "The construction and operation of all solar energy facilities shall be consistent with all applicable local, state, federal requirements, including but not limited to all applicable safety, construction, electrical communication requirements."
There you go.
"All buildings and fixtures forming part of a solar energy facility shall be constructed in accordance with the state building code."
I like it. I got you.
"Solar energy facility may be erected upon the issuance of an affirmative site plan approval decision. All setback yard buffers, screening requirements, applicable zoning, maybe under that section you may want to say all dimensional controls requirements, because that would, that would include height."
What number are you reading?
I understand that. Actually, I think it would probably be further in. But my, my concern right now is that where C, under applicability, is talking about, gives a clear go-ahead to the residential structures, I still don't see anything in here that talks about a roof-mounted for industrial. Because we're defining commercial as ground-mounted. And we're defining onsite solar energy facility as ground-mounted. We're specifically calling that out in the definitions. And I think, I think at the very least, we ought to look to the onsite solar energy facility definition, and we should modify that.
A solar energy facility, for the purpose of this bylaw, "Solar energy facility shall consider both onsite solar energy facilities and commercial solar energy facilities. Such facility shall include transmission, storage, collection." So, there, a solar energy facility is defined. And it doesn't say ground-mounted.
Yeah, it does, the very first line says, "A ground-mounted total solar voltac installation for the purpose." No, I'm on onsite solar energy facility, page three. "A ground-mounted solder, solar photovoltaic installation for the purpose of electrical generation where the facility is in accessory use to the principal use of the property." And I get that, I think that's fine, except I think we ought to add in something there that says this, this also applies to roofs, roof-mounted. Maybe we could just say a ground-mounted or roof-mounted solar, solar voltac installation?
Okay, well, the section I just read, I, I thought covered, and then it said, "All solar energy facilities."
Right, but that's a solar energy facility.
Right.
And solar energy facility has its own definition.
And in the definition of a solar energy facility, it considers both onsite facilities, commercial. So, with a reference to onsite, it goes back to the one you were just concerned about.
Well, onsite's the, again, I'm not reading anything here that, that I think would help the building inspector if someone is slapping down plans to put it on their roof. I think it's a hole, I think it's a huge hole. There's nothing in here, we're, we're limiting commercial.
So, if somebody comes in and wants to install on the roof, an industrial building, what, what would it be called? A solar energy facility.
What's its purpose? Right, but it's going to fall into any solar energy facility, because we've defined solar energy facility. Any solar energy facility falls under either A, an onsite solar energy facility, or B, a commercial solar energy facility.
And where are you looking at that?
Up here.
We're defining commercial, and we're defining onsite.
Yeah, and there's also a definition just for solar energy facility.
Right, that's the general one. And I, I don't see anything in the, in the, in any one of those three that says that it also includes a roof-mounted.
So, you're looking for the term of saying roof-mounted?
Yes, I, I, I'm, I'm.
Because with this, "The construction and operation of all solar energy facilities," I guess to you, it's not a direct enough correlation. Because it says, "All solar energy facilities have to be."
Where are you, where are you?
In 139B.
139B.
At the end of that page, okay?
Yep.
So, that collects all solar energy facilities, that's the definition.
Okay.
Solar energy facility is both onsite and commercial. And the definition of onsite commercial includes ground-mounted or commercial.
I understand what you're saying, you, you think you're capturing it there.
So.
I think I have, I have a problem, though.
You've got to, you want to include in the definition of commercial and onsite, ground-mounted and roof-mounted.
Or roof-mounted, yeah.
Or.
Yeah, or roof-mounted. And/or, it should be and/or, because some people may want to put it on their roofs and cover some of their parking lot with it, right?
All right.
Does everybody, does, maybe I'm.
I understand what you're saying, but there's, there's a couple of, either, I think, to begin with, there's, there's way too much stuff in here for a bylaw.
I think you need it.
And the other thing is, is that, like, like, for instance, in general, I don't see anywhere where this, when you're saying as-of-right, it means that, to me, that you cannot deny it. It's something that they have a right to do based on state and federal laws.
Under state law, they, they kind of do.
And, and when you say specifically, number C here, on page two.
Page two, C?
"Nothing in this section shall be construed to prevent the installation of accessory roof-mounted," C, C?
Right, I'm, I'm on it, yeah.
So, I think that, that holds true for everything here. You cannot prevent it.
No, you, but.
You have to do.
What you have to do is you have to make sure that it's cited appropriately, that you can condition it.
You can condition it, but you can't prevent it.
You wouldn't unreasonably regulate it.
I'm telling you.
Yeah.
That's how, that's, that's how I recall going to the, the training sessions. It's something that you.
Projects cannot be prohibited, but can be reasonably regulated by the building inspector.
Absolutely.
So, that sentence alone, I think, is unnecessary, really.
No, no.
You can't prevent it, any of it, not, not only just the residential structure.
I think the way I'm reading that, C.
Projects can't be prohibited, they, they can be denied, but they can't be prohibited.
What does prevent mean?
I didn't see prevent, I said prohibited.
I know you didn't, but it's, you've got prevent here, so you're saying the same thing.
No, I'm not.
Prevent the, I, I think with the, the way that's termed, I, I think it's in there to show that a residential structure, okay, wouldn't be prohibited in any way.
But neither will anything else.
On a roof. On a roof.
You, you, you cannot regulate solar installations on residential roofs.
Anywhere you can't. You can't, you can't deny them anything.
Right, so that's why it says it doesn't consider residential at all.
If, if you want to put solar panels on your roof, after, if, let's say that this goes through, if you want to put a solar panel on your roof, you don't come to this Board for site plan approval.
All right, that's what it should say. There you go.
That is what it says.
No, it doesn't, it says.
"Nothing in this section shall be construed to prevent the installation of accessory roof-mounted photovoltaic installations on residential structures."
Does it say you, it's not required a site approval?
No, it says, it says.
That's all I think it should say.
How do you think it should say, how should we?
That's all I think it should say, is that residential structures, installation on residential structures is not, does not require a site approval.
Okay, let's add that in.
As my pen going.
How's that sound? Add that in, residential installations on residential structures do not require site plan approval.
If someone put a.
On single-family, on single-family residential. Single-family residential.
I don't know if it, if you can say single-family, because there's multi-families in, in town, and duplexes, and.
Yeah, and apartment buildings.
Two families and apartments and.
Just leave it residential.
Those are residential.
Yeah.
So, installation on residential structures.
Do not require a site approval.
Irrespective of use?
No, because the use is residential.
No, the dwelling is residential, if someone puts it up and says, I'm not going to.
I'm going to put a commercial up.
I'm going to, I'm going to punch that right back into the, into the grid.
Well, they can do that, that's allowable for any of it.
They, they got it.
But if you're, what, but the difference between commercial and residential in this bylaw is that the commercial use is just for selling, not for supplying a building or anyone else.
Essentially, what you're going to get is attractive land that's not developed, that will be developed for that facility.
I understand, but I'm wondering about someone who puts it up in an apartment building.
Yeah, if you have an apartment building and you have enough roof area, but if you have an apartment building, you probably have a pretty big draw, too. So, you might not be able to sell the access, there might not be any access to sell, I don't know.
Okay.
But it doesn't sound like anything we can regulate. Are we good?
Right.
What are you thinking? Okay.
The other thing, like, I had, I had written this before, I think it should say exactly that this is not a special permit. It's a site approval process. And I think that should be in the scope of authority.
That this is not a special permit?
No, this is not a special permit. It's a site, it's a site approval process.
Site approval, right, right, it's, that's what it talks about.
See, it talks about it, but I think it would be so simpler just to say it.
Well, I, I think it is said in several places, because we talk about a permit granting authority, not a special permit granting authority. And that's defined, that's in our definitions. If it was a special permit, it would be a special permit granting authority, it would be an SPGA, but this is a PGA.
And under as-of-right sightings, shall mean development may proceed without the need for a special permit, variance, amendment, waiver, or other discretionary approval.
Where, where is it?
As-of-right sighting?
Oh, the definitions?
Yeah. We go with that? The only question I had on that was the second sentence, Howard? "As-of-right development may be subject to site plan approval to determine conformance with local zoning ordinance," or shall, is it may or shall?
Shall.
Should be shall?
Should be shall. Because we, we are requiring it.
So, that's changed there? Are you with us on that one, Bob?
Yeah.
Got that first definition there? "Under building inspector, can I ask, is it absolutely necessary to define building
For clarity in this.
Okay.
I believe that it was.
Okay, in that case, read with me through the, the definition here. "The inspector of buildings, building commissioner, or local inspector, or person, or board." I think maybe if we are going to define building inspector, isn't, isn't, that shouldn't the, the definition of that be the building inspector of Georgetown, Matt? And we can get rid of all that other stuff.
I think it's just.
It should be the local building.
I would prefer to see it that way, so that it's.
It's much clearer. Because it's not a board.
Right.
It's not a local inspector, commissioner, it's, it's, it's none of those things. We, we know who the building inspector is. The Board of Selectmen hires them every few years, and that's it. I think building inspector should be defined as the building inspector.
If you want to say inspection department, take any electrical and plumbing that goes with it, I mean, it is. take any electrical and plumbing that go with it, I mean, it is considered all one department that works under the building inspector.
What do you think, Howard?
Um.
The other one's gonna get the phone calls.
So, the, with the building inspector of.
The person.
With the enforcement of zoning warrants. He's the enforcement officer.
The building inspector.
The zoning compliance officer isn't necessarily always the building inspector, the zoning compliance officer.
But it is in Georgetown.
The zoning compliance officer is whoever the zoning board of appeals says is the zoning compliance.
It's in our bylaw, he is it.
So, the building inspector designated by local ordinance or bylaw that's charged with enforcement of the zoning ordinance in Georgetown.
No, I would just put the, the building inspector is the enforcement of this.
I like what Gary said.
Zoning ordinance. I, I didn't catch what Gary said.
The, 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 uh, building inspection department.
Does that exist? Is, is that the actual department that the building inspector works in? I can confirm it, but.
I'd confirm it, but I mean, he's pretty much the, the lead man of the, the gas inspector, the plumbing inspector, the electrical inspector.
Is, is there any other, um, spot in the bylaw where that role is defined, that we could just reference?
Yeah, it is, I, I can just add it in.
I think maybe that's.
Maybe that's the way to do it.
It is, it's in, it's in forty-eight, your building inspector is, is Georgetown zoning for, enforcement of. Some people, some communities have large land use departments, and they designate different people.
And Georgetown.
Ours has been one guy.
And it might change in the future.
Right, that's the only concern.
It's the role that we're interested in, and if the role is defined somewhere else, that's what we should, yeah.
I agree, I agree. Howard, can you find that out for the next cut?
Yeah.
Thanks, man. Uh, designated location, the locations as designated by the board of selectmen in accordance with Mass General laws, chapter forty-eight, I, I, I think we can just say, um, as designated by town meeting.
I don't think we should say anything there, I'll tell you, I was surprised I was there, I, I wondered, uh, what, what's the explanation for it?
I think you can take the whole first sentence out and just go, lo- said locations is are shown on the Town of Georgetown zoning overlay map, right? Lose that whole first sentence, because I think it's, uh, references to forty-eight and, or a little wordy there.
And well, according to.
Said location is shown on the Town of Georgetown zoning and overlay district maps, right? Because we, we'll be doing that later on when we change that, alright?
But I.
What are you saying, what do you think?
Well, I, I don't know what you have accomplished prior to this, this hearing, but, um, all zones are gonna be able to do this.
Right, but there's gonna be an overlay map for it, once you, we get to the, um, um.
I think that's all you should say.
Regulations.
It's designated location, all districts and town, I think that's all you have to say. You wanna say overlay, fine, but.
Leave it as an overlay, because.
Well, that's the official name of the map in Georgetown.
Yeah, that's the way you say it, so, that's the, that's the way to identify it.
We don't have a Town of Georgetown zoning map, we have a Town of Georgetown zoning and overlay districts map.
Yeah. There is a definition down here, zoning enforcement officer, uh, the person or board charged with enforcing the zoning ordinances or bylaws, is that good? Or is that something that would share the definition with the reference to building inspector?
I can add that into the building inspector.
Okay, okay. Tilly, here's where, um, I'm on page four now. On page four, and it's, um, parentheses number seven.
Alright, I have a note on three, okay?
What do you got, go.
I, I think that the electric department is supposed to be in here somewhere. Because he, obviously, he's, he's gonna be the knowledgeable person.
Right, and this is number seven, that's what I'm talking about.
B, no, this is right here, where it says the construction.
You're talking about, where are you, you're in B?
Yeah.
Compliance with zoning laws, ordinances, and regulations? And where shall be consistent with all applicable local, state, and federal requirements, including but not limited to safety, construction, electrical, and communications requirements. All buildings affixes forming part of a solar energy facility shall be constructed in accordance with state building code.
Yeah.
Good, and I think I know what you're saying, you want to make sure that we involve the electrical department. Check out number seven, the bullet number seven here, okay?
And. Item number seven was language given to us directly from the light department.
Absolutely, and they, they talk about requirements for two documents that they have, that they publish. One called the qualifying facility power purchase rate, and the other standards for interconnecting distributed generation. And those are both published by the Town of Georgetown Light Department, I assume those are on the website? Anyway, moving forward, going down, oh, what is it?
Jump ahead.
Okay.
Now, you have in here, you've got written a special permit, PGA and a special permit.
Oh, good catch.
Where are you?
On number six, good catch there, Tilly, we have to pull that word special out. On number six, second line, specifically permitted otherwise by the PGA in the permit, right? In the, should we say permit, or should we say in the site plan approval?
Site plan approval.
Yeah.
Good catch.
Yeah.
See, why we keep it here, see, go good like that.
It was tough, uh, reading all this, uh, and the other, number four, I had a question mark next to it, uh.
Right.
I thought four and eight should be consolidated, because it, it refers to the vegetation. And I found, you know, I'm, I'm wondering how we're going to be able to handle that, because obviously it needs sunlight, and you can't have shade around the, the structure, so.
I see four and eight is different, I, I see.
Yeah, they are a little bit different.
Impact and eight is, is clearing.
Yeah.
Well, how, how can a person accomplish that, if you're gonna put it?
We're talking our own.
On the lawn, or you're gonna put it in the roof, or you're, you know, how is that gonna?
Well, the.
I'm just looking for examples of what we could be getting.
Uh, I, I, this is something that they're gonna have to deal with, that's something for the engineers.
Accessory structures, uh, shall be mitigated, uh, landscaping, natural features, fencing. So if they've got a big transformer on the roof, they're gonna have to put some type of fencing up or screen.
Some kind of screening.
Mitigate it.
Yeah, I can understand that.
The issue, the point is that it's, it's going to be addressed, it will be addressed, the, the, uh.
Not how it's gonna be addressed.
Right, that it needs to be done, natural features, fencing, landscaping, and I think eight that you're talking about there, although it does almost, it sort of plays in because it's natural vegetation, and it's talking about vegetation. Number eight is, is specific, and it talks about the limits of clearing of natural vegetation, in other words, don't just go in and wipe out every tree on the lot if you don't have to, which sometimes can happen. Can I just typo, I guess, in F, under submission requirements and required documents? Number one, as, unless it's not, as party, uh, as part of the site plan approval?
Yeah.
Process, right, okay, not party.
When you're talking about roads too, with nine, I have a note, uh, what if they needed a curb cut, who were they going to be?
Maintenance, uh, solar energy facility owner and operator shall maintain facility in good condition, maintenance shall include but not be limited to painting, structural repairs, continue compliance with landscaping, screening requirements, and integrity of the security measures. The owner or operator should be responsible for the maintenance of any access road serving the installation, well, uh, I don't think we need to, we may want to address it, but I don't think we need to, I mean.
In the site plan, if they're required to get a curb cut, then they'd have to talk to the highway survey.
Highway survey?
Yeah. He's the one that issues any curb cuts in town, right?
And I mean, whatever zoning district you happen to be in, you have frontage requirements, and we also reiterate setbacks a little further in. Right, curb cut has to come from you.
Yeah, but we're, yeah, we just don't even mention curb cuts for it, you know, that's all I'm saying, it's just not even there.
Well, I think that would be something you'd have to deal with in the, uh, you know, in the, in the site plan approval. I didn't see anything that I would change in any of the few next pages, uh, until I hit page eight. Do you have something, Tilly?
I have, uh.
Is that page five?
You have zoning district designation for the parcels.
Yeah, this is talking about submission requirements.
In here, you're only mentioning zoning map.
Well, this is.
Not mentioning.
Submission requirement, in other words, when, when you go for site plan approval, you have to have certain documents, you have to have certain requirements, things that you're gonna have to present to the board. One of them is the zoning designation for the parcel.
Yeah, but you're not listing it like you did over here, for the zoning map.
Sorry, submission of a copy of a zoning map with the parcels identified as suitable, it.
You're not calling it a Georgetown zoning and overlay district map.
Right, I just consider that as being something off of my map or something like that, that's just, here's the property, and this is the zone on it.
Oh, well, maybe you should put my map in there. If that, you know, that's what you meant. Maybe you can.
Hi, Howard, let the record show that Howard, uh, Tim Howard shows, uh, arrives at, uh, what is it, seven fifty? Thanks, um, hi.
Hey, Harry.
How you doing?
Good.
Very good, real well, real well, good to see you.
Good to see you.
We're, um, we're in, um, the continuation of the solar bylaw hearing that we continued from, when was it, Howard?
September.
Months ago, right?
Yeah.
September, um.
Amendment.
We are, it should be in your packet, and.
Yeah, I already.
Good, anything, uh, if, uh, we're, we're on page five, and we're just sort of chiming in with anything that we see as we go through it. Okay?
Yep.
So what is J, K, and L, that's, is this the new numbers of this page?
Yes, yes, those are all, those are all new numbers that come into play with, uh, with the adoption of this bylaw. Those are new ones.
But we don't have, oh.
Right, it refers back to the section.
So you're.
Section J, section K, section L.
Yeah, but.
Of one thirty-nine, which is this.
On page five, yeah.
Yeah.
So you've got these, these numbers over here.
Yep.
I don't see what, I don't, I don't see.
Well, keep in mind.
See it.
Keep in mind that one sixty-five.
You got one thirty-nine.
Right, but see, J, J is act.
A, B, C, D, E.
Is, J is on page seven.
Oh, where's G, well, I got F here. Where's G?
No, where, where's F, where are you talking about F?
On page four, F.
No, that's submission requirements, but that, that's, that's not.
It's one sixty-five, one thirty-nine.
Yes.
I got that at three, alright, A, B.
Proof of liability insurance that satisfies J, J is on page seven, see, proof of liability insurance. And then, hey, hold on to that page, K, description of financial certainty that just satisfies section K, right after that is financial certainty.
Well, why don't we, why are you putting it in here like this?
Because these is the documents that need to, it's just calling out the documents that need to be submitted for a submittal. So that someone that wants to gain a permit knows clearly what he needs to bring in, he or she needs to bring in, it's clearly illuminated what all of the, the documents that they're going to need. They don't walk in just saying, hey, look, uh.
I know, but it just seems like it's repetitious, you know, if you already got it listed.
I think it's real.
You know, I don't think you need that, personally, I think that you, all you do is a listing.
Are we planning to get through all of this stuff tonight?
We're gonna do this in half an hour.
Well, we're, we're gonna roll along.
We have about a half an hour.
I, I, I can tell you, I, I, um, I, I'm pretty good with everything up until page eight. And the only thing on page eight that I saw was, um, the site plan approval review criteria and procedures. We say the PGA may grant a site plan approval and require that a certain requirements be met as conditions of approval. Those certain requirements, and the terminology, the term that's being used here is may or may not be outlined in the following section. I think, um, I think we want to say, um, are below, but not limited to. You know what I'm trying to say, Howard?
Uh, I do, I.
Yeah, that's the only thing I changed there. Um, stick with proven terminology.
Certain requirements, and how do you want it?
Click on immediately.
Right.
Stick with the phrases.
Those certain requirements, and how do you want it written?
Those certain requirements, um, will be, are not limited, well, I don't know, how, how would, what am I thinking of there, are limited? Those requirements are below, are inclusive of, or, or, yeah, how do, how do they say it? Are inclusive of but not limited to the following.
Yeah.
Are inclusive of but not limited to the following.
Well, yeah, and also the question mark is, is when you're putting the PGA may grants.
Mm-hmm.
If we can't re, we can't prevent it, so, we can't deny it.
You can still put conditions on it.
Yeah, you can put conditions on it. That requires certain requirements be medicine, this PGA may grant a site plan approval and require.
You shall grant.
Read the whole sentence, read the whole sentence, not just the section. The PGA may grant a site plan approval and require that certain requirements be met as conditions of approval. And you know what, we may grant a site plan approval and have no conditions. You gotta read the whole sentence.
Well, I still think that it should be shall, not read the whole thing.
Well, what if we're under a situation where there are no conditions for approval, then we're required to?
Everything, yeah, everything else here is basically, uh, Amesbury's, and, and I, and you know, it's pretty good.
Don't, don't refocus on the wheel.
Yeah.
Like it, where, where it's going, can we get to setbacks? Are we good right now to go into setbacks, I think, pretend?
The only thing I don't, I don't care for that statement, PGA may grants. You're, you, if you start saying may grants, you're given the opinion that, uh, they can turn it down, that, that we can turn it down. And then you're gonna run into that same situation where you're violating the, the law.
Yeah, how about this, how about we, um, at the end of this process, this moves forward, and this will be reviewed by town council. If they're interpreting it the way that you're interpreting, they'll pull it out, or they'll highlight it for us.
Well, then why don't you send the whole thing to our council?
Because.
And then we look at it.
We had, because of things like this.
Twelve pages of it.
Page ten, setbacks, everybody with me, page ten setbacks, okay? This is where you, this is where the, the rubber hits the road, we're talking about setbacks. And front yard setback, according to this, the front yard shall have a depth of at least twenty feet from the property line. Provided, however, with locusts or butts of conservation use, or recreational use, or a residential use district, the front yard shall be not less than fifty feet. Is everybody good with that?
Where'd that come from?
Well, Amesbury, I've, where was the model?
Amesbury.
Where'd the model come from, Howard? You know what?
Came from about five different places, as well as including the state model, so. This was done so that if, if a commercial entity wants to install on the ground next to a residential.
Mm-hmm.
Ask to sit back farther.
Absolutely.
So this whole section here is for commercial, not individual solar installations?
This is commercial. Any, any solar energy facility, including local or on, what were the two, onsite or commercial?
So somebody wants to put photovoltaic panels on their roof, this applies to them?
Not at all, we already went through that, they got a green light.
Residential.
Residential, green light, we clarified that.
Alright.
Now, what we're talking about is. A situation where somebody would putting, be putting ground mounted. A commercial facility or onsite facility for, you know, onsite collection for use on, onsite for an industrial or something like that.
Yeah.
And what are the setbacks? And what are the conditions of the setback? Essentially, remember, they're gonna need to fence these things off. You're gonna be looking at essentially what's a six-foot security fence around these things. Okay, so keep that in mind. Where is the setback? And the first one is front yard. Setback from the road, how far back from the road? Do we feel it should be? What's reasonable, is twenty feet? Enough? If it happens to be next to a park or. Or a residential zone.
Who cares?
I, I don't really care about front yard setback.
No, I wouldn't either.
It really isn't because it's off the street.
Right.
So.
If somebody can see it from twenty feet, they'll see it from fifty feet.
The front yard doesn't, they don't need to push back.
Right.
In my opinion. So.
Just delete that front yard, not be less than fifty feet then.
The front yard shall not be, be less than twenty feet, is what you're saying, right?
Well, it already, it already says that.
Can reiterate it. But that's an easy, quick way to clean this up, right?
The front yard shall not be less than fifty feet, take that out.
Take. Yeah, you can just kill it?
No, you know why? Because in the district in downtown, I think it's right up to the street. Is the frontage. You have to compare it to the districts that, that we already have in place. Requirement.
Okay. You don't want it, you wanna let them have it? Well, this is, this is a special use that's being proposed for a lot, wherever it's going in.
But you also have to take into consideration what you already. Already zoning requirements in each district. And to make it compatible to all districts, you have to consider. The RA is not twenty feet in the front. Do you have the zoning?
Yeah.
I think.
I understand what you're saying.
You know?
But bear in mind that that can be waived.
Yeah, but.
Because in number two, PGA may grant a waiver from setback requirements if the applicant can demonstrate.
Why don't we just say the setback should be appropriate to what zoning.
That's right.
Located if we're in.
That's what, that's what I'm saying, it should be.
For all of those?
Yeah.
No, I'm not good with that. I see situations where it's not, I'm not good with that.
Well, then, then like you're saying. The. Each application will be treated on its own merits. Then it would be a side approval to determine.
Right.
No, I can't do this. And then you could say, well, can you put it in the backyard? Can you put it in the side yard? Is there anywhere else that you can accommodate it?
We're presuming that it's gonna go in the middle of the parcel. And we're looking at front yard setback, side yard setback, and rear yard setback.
Well, to begin with.
We're only dealing with three dimensions here.
Nobody.
How far back from the street should it be?
The houses are usually in the middle. Or at least closer to the front.
This isn't for a house.
The idea here is to incorporate a buffer.
Yeah.
So. Both visually and to add adequate area for vegetative screening and fencing and things like that.
The question is, do you want a buffer in the front? I mean, it's the streetscape. Doesn't need a buffer. People have to enter the facility somehow, they have to drive in, they have to enter, there's upper net buildings. I think twenty feet's good.
But not less than fifty feet, do you wanna put that in?
No, I, I think it should, I think you should strike that, I agree with Tim. Strike that.
The front yard shall have a depth.
Of at least twenty feet from the property line, they wanna go further back, fine. And then if.
I don't think it matters if there's, if it abuts a conservation use, recreational use, or residential use.
Well, it matters if they got a ball field next door.
Not for the front yard, I don't think the front yard does. I think that's what we're saying. For the, for the side yard, definitely, for the rear yard, no question. But for the front yard, no, because you're in a street, you're in your frontage, talking about streetscape. Okay, come on, clock is ticking, consensus here, what can we agree on? Twenty feet, lose the front yard off.
As to our district requirements. Our, our schedule. I'm for keeping it with the district. And, and none of it is less than fifty feet. None of that would apply to any of them.
What do you mean?
We don't have anything like that on her, any of her districts.
I know, but this is a special facility. This is a solar vol, voltage, this is high-power.
I think we should.
Solar facility that's gonna have a fence around it for security purposes because you've gotta keep kids from playing on these things.
Yeah, but I think we've, we've got a district outlined and our side dimensions, front dimensions. We should stick to it.
That's for structures.
This is a structure. It needs a building permit.
So right now, the front yard says the front yard shall have a depth of at least twenty feet from the property line. And that's it.
Is everybody good with that?
No, I'm not.
Because, you're not good with it because you could change it for the district.
I want it to be the same as our districts. Our established zoning districts.
I think it's rough. Because you're trying to take into consideration every piece of property. In town. And in some places it might not be appropriate, in some places it would be more than appropriate.
Right, so number two would kick in then. PGA can grant a waiver from the setback if the applicant can demonstrate. Right, all those three conditions.
True.
We just need a number that's a general thing and if it's a, a unique case where it's. In a district that already has, only has a five-foot setback, then the board can look at it, take that into consideration and grant the waiver.
No, I think that, the reason, another reason why I, I don't feel this is, this should be compared to Georgetown. Is because most of this is from Amesbury.
No, Tilly.
Amesbury.
It's not verbatim from, I, I had five or six different municipalities and the state in there.
Yeah, but where, where in a, in a town like ours did you pull this from? Because.
I didn't pull it, I, I melded five or six different bylaws together.
Yeah, with cut and paste.
Well, I, no.
No.
I, I can write.
Well, let me ask this. Let me ask this, Tilly. You, you're.
Well, let me finish my point. My point is, is that I think this is from a city like Amesbury. We're not. So twenty feet for them is apropos, I mean, that, that's. Common for Amesbury, but for Georgetown, I don't think it is.
Well, let, let me say this. You see, see this setback, see this paragraph here? You're gonna deal with an identical but different numbers for. The solar, the, and the, the wind. Both deal with that. We, it's pretty much replicated, so. I think what we need to do is we need to sit back for a second, take a minute to think about what the setback would be. Envision a facility, ground-mounted solar panels. And they're making electricity to sell, or they've got a building that's already there and they're making a facility to. Provide power for their own onsite use. What is the setback that's appropriate? And I'm just talking about the front yard. I think we can live with twenty feet because in other situations. You can waive that twenty feet if someone needed to come closer for whatever reason.
I, I agree with that, Harry. Because there's an out.
Good for twenty?
Yep.
How, Tilly, you, you, you don't think, Tilly, the twenty's good?
No, I'm not too keen on that.
You think it should be less?
And I'm certainly not keen on, shall be three acres, I don't know how that's possible.
Let's, let's stick with one thing at a time, we're talking about front yard right now. How can we make this work? Uh, front yard shall have a depth of at least twenty feet from the property line. Just stop there.
Yep.
Kill everything after the word line, Howard, please.
Yep.
Right? Let's move to the second one, now we're talking about the side yard. Side yard shall have a depth of at least twenty from the property line, however, with a locus or butts of conservation use, a recreational use, or a residential district, side yard shall be not less than fifty feet. I like that.
I like that.
Tim? Greater, less, what do you think?
Less.
Less, waivable under the, under the section two there, it can be less. I think fifty feet should be a starting zone. If you're right next to, if you happen to be in an industrial district. And. I'm your abutting, residentially zoned neighbor. I think you should at least be back fifty feet. Before I, before I hit that fence.
If you locate a use onto an industrial property that's next to a residential, you have to maintain a hundred-foot buffer.
Yeah. It's different.
And then this is saying fifty. For structures, but not for the fence.
Right.
For structures.
So that should be a hundred? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm, I'm saying. It's a hundred now for a, a far.
There are some, there are some.
And that, the hundred feet takes into consideration noise and, and.
Right, right. But there, there have been enough. Patchwork quilt. Zonings where you end up with residential very, very close to industrial, right along industrial. And there is no hundred-foot back setback. It's waiting right there in the bylaws, in the zone, it is. It is. For certain areas. So I think this is appropriate, I think it's appropriate anyway. Are you saying that it should be more?
No, I'm just stating a hundred as a comparison.
Okay. Fifty work for everybody for this? Anybody wanna make it bigger?
No, I, I don't totally understand why the side and the rear and the front should be different anyway. Totally get that.
If you're in an industrial area. Located next to an industrial. Use, you only have to be twenty-five, but if you're gonna locate next to. A less intensive residential or conservation area, it's just to provide a greater depth of buffer on, on the property.
So essentially you wanna just leave it as it's written?
I'm happy with it.
All right.
I like it. In the rear yard. Personally didn't understand why the side setback should be twenty feet and the rear yard's twenty-five. Is there? Is there, explain why, why would we do that? Why would that not be twenty?
For conversation and thinking if twenty-five was enough, we should make the twenty, twenty-five.
Everybody happy with the rear yard?
With anything but the front yard.
Okay, everybody.
Last one.
Is everybody happy with rear yard? Make it twenty consistent, make it, make it twenty consistent? So twenty-five feet in C gets changed to twenty feet, right? And rear yard shall not be, shall not be less than fifty feet, right? Tilly, you expressed a concern about D, the minimum lot area, shall be three acres?
I don't see how that could work. Three acres in all districts.
Not in all districts, maybe not, well, it could.
And that's the whole.
Why couldn't it?
Okay, tell me how. How many, how many parcels? Do we have available in all these districts?
In all of town? In the whole town? How many, how many parcels are greater than three acres in Georgetown?
Yeah.
I have no idea.
Yeah.
I just, I, I wonder where three acres came from. What's the, what's the thinking behind it? I, I got the three acres as that is a realistic size. Uh, that's kind of your event horizon between being viable or not viable.
Less than that, you know, it's not gonna be, you're not gonna make enough power to sell.
No, I understand.
But you're not necessarily trying to sell it.
And is that our problem?
But we're supposed to make it compatible for all districts. So that, the whole idea is to, to make us have a eligible for green community act?
Right, but my question is, is. Are, is it our responsibility to make of an evaluation? As to whether this is a smart deal or not? Three acres? Uh, I don't care. Whether it's three acres or a half an acre or super.
You've got an option of either, you can take it out or you can give a waiver to it. If someone comes in and says, I can make this work on two, I request a waiver.
Well, that's right, we can waiver it.
We certainly can, I just.
Or you can just take out the limitation entirely.
Yeah, but you, yeah, when you have shall, you can't take that out.
Yeah, you can because in the next line it says you can.
It has to be may. Well, then that word has to be changed.
No, you can take out D entirely, scratch it.
The next paragraph doesn't grant a waiver from the lot area.
Yeah, it says setback requirements.
So I think we should just dump that, get rid of the.
You wanna kill that?
Yeah.
You good with that?
Yeah.
You good with getting rid of it, Tilly? Lose D entirely, right? We're not talking about there is no minimum lot area, okay, good. The only thing at this point that I think we might need to, and again, here we go. Where this section that we just talked about, it talks about setbacks. It's, it's actually under the, the heading of dimension and density requirements. With respect to dimension. If someone was, were to be doing an industrial onsite. Let's say I have a, two and a half-story building. That's pretty much the height restriction in Georgetown and most.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five feet. So let's say my roof line is thirty-four. What happens when I mount solar panels? Angled. Let's say I take a forty-foot solar panel array. And I angle it at forty-five degree. I'm pretty far up above my building.
They don't do that. I've never seen one like that. I don't share the wind.
Ever been in Boston?
Wind loading.
You ever look down from a high building in Boston at the lowest hours?
Well, we're not in Boston.
No, but believe me, engineering-wise, there's reasons to do it. I, I've seen them.
I don't think.
That's the only reason I'm, I'm envisioning it. And I'm just thinking, how does this board wanna add a dimensionality as far as height?
I think chimneys are exempt from the height. On a building.
Cooper is too, I think, they don't count. Do these?
I don't, I don't think Cooper is mentioned, but I think it's chimneys.
I don't want a building inspector to be presented with a plan and then. He says, well, wait a minute. You're over the height limitation. I can't give you this permit. You need to go to the ZBHA for a, for a zoning. Or, I don't know.
It's up to the roof ridge, that's, that's the measurement, building height. It's up to, from the foundation of the building to the top of the roof ridge.
What about a flat roof? So anything you mount on top of a roof is okay?
It doesn't say anything about it not being okay. It doesn't even mention it.
Howard, would you, would you explore that a little bit?
Yep.
Maybe that's a conversation with, with the building inspector, how he handles something like that. And maybe he might.
I can put something in when I reissue this back to the board.
It's, it's just something that maybe we need to look at. But avoid a problem before it becomes one. And maybe I'm.
With the state building code. Maybe with the state building code.
I don't know, Tilly, you might be right. And I think we're pretty darn close here, on page ten, on, on signage. When we talk about signage, I think that we should add something that basically says that. Basically says that if you're gonna put up a sign, it should be on the site plan approval. Should be on the site plan, should be part of the site plan approval. How can we add that in, Howard?
I'll just put in F. And say. Any proposed. Any. Signs proposed.
Must be approved on the site plan approval.
Shall be prior approval or something in the site plan process. Shall be part of the site. Plan. Approval.
Shall be included in the. Site plan approval.
Or any signs proposed shall be. permitted. As part of the site plan approval.
I like it. I have, look at, look at section number C there. And section number, uh, letter E, excuse me. And I think it's a reprint. I- is it, or isn't it? I, I'm, I'm not sure. Solar energy facilities shall not be used for displaying any advertising except for reasonable identification of the manufacturer.
Uh, it's the same as C, just said in a different way.
Okay, so we can strike E? Because it's a reprint of C?
Alright.
Okay. That's out. And, um. Good. Okay, um, down to F. Natural buffer and wildlife corridors. Um, and undisturbed buffer shall be part of the setback. Area and maintained between the solar energy facility and the property line. This buffer would only be required on those projects that abut residential properties with residential dwellings. That would have a direct view of the solar energy facility.
Do you wanna just, uh, abut-
Everybody good with that, or?
Residential, um, district? And just take the rest out? This buffer would only be required on those projects that abut a residential district?
I think maybe that would be the, the best way to clean it up.
If it's on the, the south face, if, if it's, if. The direction that the solar array is pointing, if you have a buffer. That goes up to the highest point of the solar array and the sun gets lower in the sky, you've got no. Solar power coming to it.
You know, the, uh-
What you're saying is basically it's not a good sighting location for a facility like that.
Well, that's one way you could look at it.
But you know what?
But no matter where you put it, if, if the natural, if you're gonna have trees that are-
Right, but if the, it says later in the section, if the natural vegetative visual buffer would have a detrimental effect on the ability to generate power. An alternative screening buffer, uh. May be proposed. So if the vegetation's gonna grow too high, you gotta put in a, a fence.
I had a discussion about that and, and about the solar and, and they were telling me that. The ray, the best rays that come to the solar, uh, structures is right directly over it. So the heat is, is centered.
It's this way, irrespective. It isn't like straight down, it's whatever is at ninety degrees.
Yeah.
To the plane of the, the, recently.
And I think that's why, well, I think that's why there's so much mentioning of buffers.
Yeah, and, and-
It's possible to put a buffer.
It's possible, it might be possible, and that's something that a site plan would have to show.
Hmm.
You're gonna need careful, um, careful identification and-
And this is still infant technology, I mean, undoubtedly, there're gonna be technologies developed that are gonna rotate these suckers so that they'll track the sun.
We have them.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Stand them up. Lay them down.
Right, let them watch the sun.
Stick way up above the building. But we'll talk about that later.
Use mirrors.
One quick correction, Howard, uh, in, in F, uh, referencing section one sixty-five, one forty-two. Believe that's the wind bylaw. Find the one you were looking for there, okay? You with me?
Yeah.
And I think, I have nothing else, I've got nothing. Tilly, I see you have a little note there.
This one here, I, I'm serving the electric department too. Decommissioning shall consist of.
Where, where are you, I'm sorry?
When you, at the last part of it.
Are you on page?
When you decommission twelve.
Page, what, what page are you on?
Twelve.
Twelve, gotcha. Okay.
And what section?
I think, uh, two B.
Me, two B.
Two B.
Any municipal utility connections shall be disconnection, disconnected, we're talking about decommissioning. To the satisfaction of the Department of Public, oh, we don't have a Department of Public Works, good catch, Tilly.
I thi- I think it should be electric department. And the fire department.
I think it should be the highway surveyor.
Well, the highway surveyor, if you wanted to do that.
Um.
Well, that would be the DPW.
If we had one.
We don't have one, we've got a highway surveyor, let's keep it accurate, we'll change it later. Or change the definition later, probably, would be the easiest way.
And light department.
And a light department, can we throw that in there too hard?
Yep.
Yeah. But the most importantly, the fire department, because if you have all these panels floating around.
Yeah.
They're still making power even if, um.
Alright, did we finish, Howard?
Um, I will hear a motion now, oh, excuse me. Uh, this is a public hearing, I know you're all enthralled with this discussion. And I, if, if you really, really wanna make a, a, a statement, please feel free to come up, sign the form. Let us know what your name is, is there any comment or, um, questions from the public? Not hearing any. Not hearing any, uh, I'll ask the board to, uh-
I'm impressed that they're still awake.
Continue. To continue this hearing, Howard, w- how do you see this?
March twenty-sixth.
March twenty-sixth?
Yeah, 'cause that night we'll be hearing citizen petition and we'll be considering harmony lane.
March twenty-sixth. Continuation?
I'd like to move that we continue this until March twenty-sixth.
Okay, is there a second for that? Motion is made by Bob, seconded by Tim. Uh, alright with that, Tilly? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. At same place, same time.
Motion carries.
Bad timing, and I wanted to say, Howard, you did a good job.
Yeah, it was very, very good work. Okay, there's two ways to look at this now, uh, we need to open the wind energy bylaw hearing. So I'm gonna open it now, I believe this is an opening of a new, a new.
Right.
Right? Okay, um, do you wanna read the, the public notice for us, please, Howard?
In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-Eight, Section Five, the Georgetown Planning Board will hold a public hearing on February twenty-sixth. Two thousand and fourteen at seven fifteen in Third Floor Meeting Room, Georgetown Town Hall. One Wyeberry Street, Georgetown, Mass, consider the following proposed amendments. To Chapter One Sixty-Five zoning bylaws of the town of Georgetown. Article nineteen, wind energy facilities, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by inserting Article nineteen, wind energy facilities. The purpose of this bylaw article, this provides standards for and promote the creation of wind energy conversion facilities by providing the standards. For the placement, design, construction, operation, monitoring, modification, and removal. Of wind energy facilities, not residential scale facilities. In appropriate land-based locations that address public safety, minimize any adverse impacts on scenic. Environmental and historic resources. And to provide adequate financial assurance for eventual decommissioning of such facilities. Full and complete copies of the draft amendments are available at the Office of the Town Court and Planning Office. Any person interested wishing to be heard on the proposed amendment should be, appear at the time and place designated. Uh, this is published in the Georgetown Record on February seventh and February fourteenth.
Thank you, Howard, thank you very much, get that, Wendy? Okay, uh, two ways to look at this. Um. We went a little bit long on the solar, the way I'm looking at it, we're about twenty-five minutes behind scheduling tonight. Um. Another, it, it's, it's, I, I, well, we haven't touched this yet. Uh, it's, we haven't touched this yet, but I do see a good number of. Very, very similar language.
Mm-hmm.
In this bylaw, that we just dealt with in the solar bylaw. Can I make a suggestion and, you know, just, I'm gonna toss it out there? Can we have Howard pretty much go back? You're gonna love me for this one.
No, I, I can amend it.
And make the changes that were made to the solar bylaw, where they're parallel in here, because. Pretty much, with the exception of a couple of sections where, where they're talking about towers and certain specific wind things. For the most part. This bylaw is a model from the solar. And a lot of the corrections that we made on the solar-
It's very similar in terms of citing, approval process, documents required.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it really is. And I, I noticed, I felt like I was doing deja vu here, I was picking out all the same things.
Unless, except this one is five pages longer than the other one.
There's a little more technical detail. There's a little more technical detail to a win, and there's. There's potentially a lot more, uh, well, you know, somebody that has solar panels. This, the, that you, you, we have to take this up.
The, the, one of the reasons why is that there's a lot more consideration made for the visual. As well as the, um, auditory impact. That a wind generation facility represents versus a solar. You get the aspect of flickering, you get the, uh, how far is, can you cast the shadow? Because of the height, uh, as well as the harmonics that are generated, any ground vibrations.
Right.
So that, that's the reason that it is a little bit longer.
Plus the fact that if, uh. Solar panel falls down, it goes. But if, uh. Wind turbine goes down.
We don't wanna come and tell-
Pick and fly a wind, uh. Well, anyway. Um, is everybody good with that? Tim, you alright with that?
So we continue and make a motion to continue?
Let, let Howard, let Howard, um, make some of the changes and bring us back a clean copy.
Yeah.
And we'll look at it then. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment or a statement or has a question? Excuse me, sir, would you, have you signed in? Would you please sign in under the wind energy facilities hearing? And, and state your name, please, for the record, for, so that Wendy can-
My name is Frank Popolo.
Hi, Frank Popolo, pleasure to meet you, sir.
What, what's your address, Frank, in Georgetown?
One twenty-nine Pond.
On Pond Street? Do you wanna put up a, a wind turbine?
No, what I'm just questioning is, you seem to be allowing these in the residential districts in town without a, without a, uh, as a matter of right. And. I can understand where there's, you know, there is a residential package that's not, not incorporated into this bylaw, right?
This, I'm sorry, I'm not-
A residential wind turbine or a residential solar package would not be covered by this bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
So do you really wanna give people the right to put a wind turbine in a, in a residential area?
I, I don't so, well, and that's something that this board has to discuss and the town meeting has to think about. Um, I, I don't think I'd wanna give anybody the right to put a huge wind turbine in their backyard. In a residential area, but at the same time-
Given the, the nature, Frank, of what these represent. And the clearance that are required for them. They're almost out of all the, the, the downtown residential areas. When you start getting into some of the larger properties. Um, there, there's a possibility that they could be located there, but. Somebody wouldn't be installing one of these wind generation facilities just for a home.
I understand that, but you, but according to your intensity view schedule, it's part of this package, you are giving them by right the opportunity to put this in every-
And they'd have to go through a site plan approval process.
If it's permitted.
Yes, if it's by permitted.
Right.
As of right, you can do a site plan approval requirement to it.
I mean, isn't that making it a pretty, a little, a lot easier for, to put one in, in a residential area than you really want it to be? I mean, why wouldn't you either make it by a special permit or by, or, or a-
I think the hardest part here is to, um.
If it's not, not an accessory used to the property, which would be somebody who has a wind turbine for their own, for their own wind generation purposes.
Right.
That I can, that's excluded because that's, that's a matter of right by state law.
Mm-hmm.
And, and my sense would be that you'd either, either make it. Illegal to put one in completely and not make it come for a use variance, or make it a special permit, at least then you're getting that review process as well. That's just a thought, I mean. Cause they, they, these really aren't conducive to residential areas whatsoever.
Well, glad we didn't take up that, uh, the, uh, the use, uh, changes, yeah, that's for later on.
And just one other, one other question, um. Uh, are, are the wind turbines that we, we're talking about of a particular type? Mono-tubular, they won't. It, it, all the guy wires are excluded. Uh, with a, um. With the blades that are rotating this way, as opposed to something that's rotating this way. How do, how would other technologies be? Be handled, I mean, if we're talking about generation of, of electricity through wind. Are we limiting the discussion to a particular technology or in particular engineering? And thi- this bylaw just considers the one that stand up and rotates like a fan. Okay. And because it, that's all it considers, if you're gonna propose something else, then you're into. A different type of permitting process. I can't picture something that's. If technology develops where it needs to rotate on the ground. Then the bylaw is gonna have to keep up with changes in technology, just the way it is for solar.
Okay, this one's tougher than solar.
Oh, yeah.
There, there's a reason we've been.
Yeah.
Putting this one off, this, this is a tough one. I'll be perfectly honest with you, I, I, I would be happy at this town meeting to get solar in, even if this didn't make it yet. I'd love to get it through, to have something on there and something to hone down.
But I think-
But I'll tell you, we're gonna need some time on this one.
Yeah, I think what, what you, if you looked at page three. The, the, the amount of kilowatts is like probably the key of what you're getting at. And, and that has to be, how many, how many voltage? Would determine. You know, the type that you're approving.
Um, I, I, I think what that's talking about is critical electrical infrastructure, and that's talking about the, the lines.
Right, but it's also saying how many, how many kilo, kilowatts you'd be getting.
The, the bylaw considers a threshold of what, if it's below, would be considered primarily for residential onsite consumption. And if it's over that, then what would be considered a commercial?
Mm-hmm, yeah, and believe me, we, we really need to look at this, but I think the first thing we should do is to clean it up. So that it's more like the solar, we get those sticking points down, so that we can get to, into the real, um, nuts and bolts of it. Because we have not done that yet. And it seems we need that with a fresh eye. A clean. Clean copy with a fresh eye that we can get at the, uh, at the continuation. I would like to point out one thing, we, we asked Howard, it seems like we tasked him with, um. Uh, making it more like the solar bylaw and the corrections that we just made for the solar bylaw. I would encourage you, remember that? Remember that three acre minimum thing?
Hmm.
Um, I would encourage you to leave that in here. In this version.
But I still, hmm.
And let's see what it looks like when we have, um. When we get back to it.
Yeah. There, there's gonna be so, enough discussion on the wind that it's not gonna be ready for any of your town meeting.
It's very possible that we won't get it done, it's very possible.
Because it, you consider how long it took for the solar?
Yeah, it's very possible, this might, this might be a, um, maybe Nick fault on me. I mean, we, we've got a lot and. My priority is the solar and-
A lot of times you do this for protection. I, it, it's highly doubtful that wind generation's gonna be coming to Georgetown.
Right.
Anytime soon.
If I had a look at a crystal ball, I would think that you would get, uh, solar panels before you get a wind turbine. Howard.
Alright. And there's just too much other, other stuff on our plate between now and the meeting.
Well, you know what, we, uh, we have medical marijuana, we have, we've got, uh, um, um. We have a citizens petition we're gonna be dealing with, we have, uh, some definitions of work. Uh, some of our, the, uh, gas forces.
And then the regular stuff, turning leaf.
Sure.
So you wanna continue it to March twenty-sixth?
Well, I think we should continue it till July first. I don't think we can, I don't, there's just too much going on for the next couple of months, realistically.
Alright, that might be a wise thing, what do you think, Bob?
Yeah, just thinking about-
First Monday Board meeting in July?
Uh, whatever, I mean, I just don't see it happening. In the next several months anyway.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna rush through this.
Not gonna pass it just to put it in there.
You don't see too many, you don't see too many people complaining about solar. Arrays, but you see a lot of people complaining about windmills.
Oh, the, the, this, they have a, they have as much impact, if not more, than a transmission tower, um. A cellular tower.
Oh, way more, because these things move, they have blades that can flicker.
Yeah, they, yeah.
Well, annual town meeting is, um, May fifth.
May sixth.
The first Monday in May is May fifth.
Okay.
Uh, so you want to take it up to the first planning board meeting in June?
Yeah.
Which would be the eleventh.
But getting back to, to, uh, this, this discussion, uh, may I add that, um. If we did get an application and we don't have anything in place. They can put it wherever they want it, we have to have some kind of, of a regulation. Otherwise, we, our hands are tied. And I think that's-
Well, not if we. Make it not permitted in any district.
But we don't have anything, we have nothing.
You get the use.
We've got the use, this is why we're doing the uses at, at night.
Schedule on, you'll have a definition.
But it says add on one of the, one of those, uh, Forty-Eighths, three, section three, where you cannot prohibit it. So how? If someone came in, we can't stop them.
Right.
Nobody's coming in. Nobody's coming in.
We might put out something on TV.
Anybody putting up a wind turbine here is going to lose their shirt.
It's, it's not a designated...
I don't even know how many areas assess the wind capability of having one in Georgetown, do you know?
It's very low.
Yeah, there's, there's only a couple of locations.
That would be what I would like to know.
There's going to be more benefit to the town of doing this bylaw for getting qualified as a green community than there will be for installation being built in Georgetown.
Bob, did I hear you make a motion to continue this to June, what was it?
Eleventh.
June eleventh?
No.
No?
But I'll, I'm happy to make one.
And I'll second it.
Wonderful.
Motion's been made by Bob to continue this to June eleventh, twenty fourteen, seconded by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously, and moving to...
But what date was that, June?
That was June eleventh, twenty fourteen. Okay, we're still twenty-five minutes behind. I'm going to open, yes, we are opening a new by, a new hearing for medical marijuana dispensaries, a new bylaw, Article twenty. Howard, would you feel like reading the, what's it called?
No, I'm just noting that it was noticed as Article twenty.
Okay.
And solar was Article eighteen, wind was Article nineteen. If this goes to town meeting, the articles will be different. Notice of public hearings zoning amendments Georgetown Planning Board in accordance with provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section five, the Georgetown Planning Board will hold a public hearing on February twenty-sixth, twenty fourteen at seven fifteen in the third floor meeting room, Georgetown Town Hall, One Library Street, Georgetown, Mass. To consider the following proposed amendments to Chapter one six five zoning bylaws in town of Georgetown. Article twenty, registered marijuana dispensary. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by inserting Article twenty, registered marijuana dispensary, the purpose of this bylaw article is to provide zoning bylaw standards for a medical marijuana treatment center. Medical marijuana treatment center is a nonprofit entity as defined by Massachusetts law, only registered with the Department of Public Health that acquires, cultivates, possesses processes, including development of related products such as food, aerosols, oils, ointments, transfers, transports, sells, distributes, dispenses, or administers marijuana products containing marijuana related supplies or educational materials to qualified patients or their caregivers. Full and complete copies of the draft amendments are available at the office of the town clerk in the planning office. This was published in the Georgetown Record on February seventh and the fourteenth. And I would like to make the statement that the planning board previously brought up this bylaw or a bylaw addressing medical marijuana and prepared it for the selectmen for a special town meeting. It was referred up to the selectman's office. The selectman decided not to hold a special town meeting. And what happens is after a zoning amendment is referred to the selectman's office, it needs to go to town vote, town meeting, within six months. If not, then the process needs to be restarted. So the bylaw that was included in the packet is not only what the planning board vetted before and referred to the selectmen, but was also reviewed by town council in preparation of special town meeting that wasn't held. So that is what is being discussed tonight.
Excellent, so what we have before us is the, what we, what we previously approved and recommended to the selectmen, reported to the selectmen. You see all the comments on the side, on the sidebars? KMP made some, made the changes, suggested changes. And when you flip to the end of that, you'll actually get to a clean copy where the Howard's provided for us under what is called Exhibit two, and it starts there.
I would like to note that the copy that came back to the planning board from town council makes the statement of removing a lot of the bylaw because it's covered under the state in other locations. So it actually shortened the bylaw.
So the second exhibit part of this is what we, how we left it, and this first exhibit is...
Exhibit, Exhibit two is a clean copy.
Of what, the lawyer?
Of, of all the lawyers, of town council's recommendation, removing, changing letters, everything. It's the track changes, it's the clean copy.
So if we just go through what the lawyer's changes were here?
It's in Exhibit two.
Right, but if we just go through Exhibit two, we won't see what the changes were.
Correct.
So we should just go through this and then approve it, Exhibit two, if we choose to do so.
Or we can just take it on faith that town council has removed anything that would be redundant.
I went through all that.
Yeah, I'll note that when I say town council, I refer to the law office that represents town of Georgetown. And the planning board usually has matters referred to the town council. He, the usual person handed it off to another lawyer, and she's the end, ended up leaving Copeland Page and going to work for the state solely for the purpose of reviewing all the bylaws and the state actions.
Who was it?
I thought it was Kate Doyle or something similar to that. So the best person on Copeland Page reviewed this, that new...
Yeah, well, the bottom line is, I mean, if you want to go through all the changes, we can.
No, I...
But I, I feel comfortable, and I'm just one member of the board.
But there's a change here, it says, we get, if you go to page ten, on the dimension and density requirements...
And we're talking about the markup version, right? The town council comments?
Yeah.
Okay.
Under dimension and density requirements, we have that minimum lot area of three acres coming up again, which that needs to just go away, just get deleted.
Well, the question asked by town council is, is that possible in the medical marijuana district?
Right.
And...
The answer is no.
Where is the equivalent section?
It's irrelevant. I don't know where that, that's the same minimum lot area that appears, appeared in the solar.
Right, it was added in for discussion.
Yeah, I agree with you. I mean, we can't put in a provision that would make it impossible for anybody, even if there's a waiver, I mean...
And if it's going to end up in the industrial zone, which appears to be one of the areas we designated it to, no one, like, building in an industrial area is going to have three acres probably with it.
We're talking about a lot, though, right?
Right, because you're considering both the dispensary and the growing facility.
Are we referring to the lot?
I think we should just get rid of that lot area, I think that's completely irrelevant.
Yeah, I agree with you, as long as, you know, I thought, my note was that the assessor identified where these three acres could be.
Right, so I don't know what you did with that, Howard, in your marked, I didn't look at your marked up.
It's still, it's still... The clean version has it in there.
So we should just get rid of it.
I just struck it out.
I'm trying to find it.
It's on page nine of the clean copy.
Right.
Halfway up the page.
A, section D.
And I believe during previous discussions on R and D bylaw, it was decided that a growing facility was going to need enough area.
But not three acres.
Not three acres.
And no one's going to grow it outside anyway, this is going to be...
But this is going to be a special permit, correct?
Yes.
Control.
Yeah.
Should we strike D, under dimensions and density requirements?
I say yes.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we strike that.
Yeah, okay, go, go into the next one, Tilly, on the clean copy, go to the clean copy. All right?
Page nine.
Page nine.
Right in the middle of the page.
And then, what did you do, Howard?
So are we good on that? Yeah, okay, let's get through this. You good with that?
Yeah.
We're going to strike it, Tim?
Yeah.
I say strike it, Tilly, you good with it? You all right with that, Howard?
I, I am, I actually think it's better that way. It gives more options for a dispensary or a growing facility to be able to locate.
They're making a point that you shouldn't differentiate, so let's not.
Yeah, they're, they're not at all, you don't see a difference at all. Tilly, did you say, did you say you had something else?
I, I have on page six of the marked up one. Any establishment licensed under the provisions of General Law, Chapter, it talks about the town will need to be prepared to provide a rational basis for requiring distance from a premises license for alcohol in the event of a legal challenge.
Hmm, what, what section is that?
Page six of the marked up one.
The marked up one?
So I'm asking you, Howard, what did you do with that? I didn't read your marked up, your cleaned up one. I was just interested in the lawyer's comments.
Yeah. Trying to find that right now.
I mean, I don't, I agree with the lawyer, I mean...
She doesn't say, ah, remove it or keep it in, but she says, what's the rational...
Right, that we'd have to have a rational basis for requiring...
And the reason why I put it in was, if you consider, I believe Georgetown has, when they issue liquor licenses, a requirement that they go before the board selectmen, and isn't there a required distance between, you can't have a liquor store right next to another liquor store? Isn't there meant to be a, a, a distance between a liquor store to a bar?
This isn't a store, this is a pharmacy, if you want to get it that way.
Right, so I put it in there to have the discussion. If, if control of location of, what's basically either a place where people are going to receive medication or a growing, does the, the board see that this type of dispensary, it would be detrimental if it was located right next to a bar or right next to a liquor store?
I don't think it would bother me one way or the other.
No. Sounds like we're striking fifteen, striking fifteen?
Yeah.
Striking fifteen?
Yeah.
Tilly, striking fifteen?
I'm just up in the air, I don't know if it's a... I don't know whether that's relevant or not, because I don't know what the license says, requirement. What does the law say?
Well, you know what?
I, I think Tim resolved it. I said, this isn't a liquor store, this is a, this is a pharmacy.
Well, what does the state law say about that? And mostly this is following the state law, right?
If, if the state said something about it, I think she would have written it in.
She would have, she would have added that as an inner comment.
I think we're going to strike it. All in favor of striking it, say aye.
When I read rational basis, I saw that more of a legal basis.
Yeah.
I'm not going to prepare something like that, so.
I don't think you can.
Okay, scratch it, I guess.
Okay, well, all in my general consent, so, Tilly, you good with it?
No.
Where else are we, guys? You want to...
By the same token, I don't understand the rationale for restricting the location.
Don't go there.
Near a swimming pool?
Video arcade.
They can always, it's ask for it.
You know what I think they, they didn't put in here is, is school bus stops.
They said any place where minors commonly congregate.
That would be a school bus stop.
Yeah, I think that that's...
So how would you do that, though? I mean, throughout town, there's bus stops. So how would you determine how far away it should be?
Well, there's a bus stop, and then there's, which is a facility for children to stand in, and then there's sections of the road that the bus happens to pull over on.
What is the distance?
But there's distances outlined in here.
Three hundred feet.
It is three hundred feet, and the planning board could grant waivers for that, three hundred feet.
I have a question mark on five up at the top.
Oh, page one.
Five?
Page five?
What is the section one six five dash one sixty-one? Is that the number?
That's right down, that's farther down page five.
I, I lost you to, oh.
One sixty, one sixty-one I. H I. It's separation, it talks about separation, Tilly.
See it? It refers to the sec, section about that Howard was just talking about, how far away you have to be. Anything else, Tim?
Again, on the marked up, George.
What page you on, buddy?
Page eight. Lawyer's comment, this operative document needs to be identified on D in the application. What did you do about that, Howard? Did you identify that?
Let's go back to...
Sorry, I should have looked at your marked up one, but it was just...
Yes, in addition to materials required under Georgetown, town of Georgetown article, what is that, X I I I, thirteen of Chapter one sixty-five, the applicant shall include.
Okay, so it's better defined.
He's defined it.
Okay. Yeah, that's okay.
Oh, you defined it by putting in sight approval? Is that what?
No, he defined it by, by, by putting in the, this...
The verbiage that...
This verbiage, so it's clearly out of a thirteen.
I think they're looking for, very likely, um...
Go to page six of the, of the clean copy, and you'll see where it is.
And, and I corrected the reference to Article thirteen of one six five, and that is, I believe, site plan and special permit.
Eighty-three is the number, one six five, eighty-three.
Do, do you want to call it that instead?
What, what did I refer to?
Article thirteen, Chapter one sixty-five.
Article thirteen, special permits and site plan review.
Mm-hmm.
Instead of just saying one eighty-three for site plan approval.
I think that...
Next one was struck.
Eleven, I think the lighting is the next one.
Eleven, page eleven?
Yeah.
All right, Tilly.
And the...
Okay, page eleven of the, of KMP markup version.
And there, it says light pollution. I think it should be, providing the light is sufficient for surveillance.
Where, where I?
Eleven, up at the top.
Well, they said that's in the state code anyway.
May require surveillance cameras. May require the surveillance cameras, right? You might need to be lit.
The state requires it to be.
So you got to cut out more than, than just one word if you're going to leave it.
It's, it's a, it's a comment. And I think what she means by that is, is our bylaw is stating that incorporate full cutoff fixtures to reduce light pollution, and when they come in under a special permit, it'll be saying, we can't do full cutoff fixtures, we can't meet your dark sky requirements because we need to have sufficient lighting for surveillance, and so you can grant the waiver.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I think it should be written out anyway, I think it should be included, that word is...
Lighting of the R and D shall be sufficient for surveillance cameras to obtain a readable image?
Remember where it is.
That sounds...
We're saying, the other thing we're saying is where feasible, so...
But if it's beyond that, you know, if the lighting is more than surveillance, then, then you'd have the option of cutting it off.
I think that's it.
Yep.
You get that, Howard?
Yep.
Good job, Howard.
Really, very, very good job. And this will be a March twenty-sixth one, right?
Remember all the revisions we went through the first time?
Well, again, I think this is a tough one, because this is, implies a big cultural change.
Oh, I have a question, too.
And after all the stuff we got rid of that was duplicative, they got rid of more duplicative stuff.
Right. Tilly, you have one thing?
I have seven.
Simpler is better, no, no, not at all.
It says, the special permit shall lapse within five years. Is that, is that the state law? It says five years?
That came off of the model bylaw.
Or we...
That's what I was wondering if, if it's the state law, there's not much you could do about it.
That was the model bylaw that the state... That was the model bylaw that the state put out.
I don't remember when.
See, that's different than the special permit. It lapses, according to forty A, two years is it lapses.
This one's five.
Five. Do you think that was a misprint there? It's contradicting forty A, special permit requirement.
I think what it's doing, I think what it's doing to me is it's it's um, it's running alongside the um, the permit from the state. Remember, you also have a, what is it, Department of Public Health? Regulates this on the state level.
It doesn't mention that, it just mentions special permit. You know, it doesn't mention anything about the state.
Anybody wanna get rid of the five? Wanna keep the five, get rid of the five?
Where are you looking to it?
On page seven. Number four, C four.
Is this on the marked up one? Page five.
It's not coming from K and P.
Special permit shall lapse within five.
Yeah, I think that was an edit put in by town council. So I believe that falls state. Because I probably had two before.
Wanna get rid of it or wanna keep it?
Bob, I think, I think you need to keep it.
If I, if five years, the state says five years.
I think we're gonna keep that one. Don't make a change on that.
You can't undo the state.
No, but you can't, I don't think they would put anything contradictory to forty A.
No, I'm sure they wouldn't. Uh, is there a motion to uh, continue this to March twenty sixth?
So second.
Uh, that was Tim made the motion seconded by Bob to continue. All in favor? Aye? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so we've taken care of solar, wind, registered marijuana. Okay, now we should get to weed. Okay, now accessory apartments, right?
Right, right, they need to go to accessory, because there's stuff with accessory that has to be.
But the definitions. Right, okay, so uh, Howard, this is a new hearing and we're going to open the hearing. For uh, a modification to uh, one sixty five sixty nine accessory apartments.
In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty eight, Section five, the Georgetown Planning Board will hold a public hearing on February twenty six, twenty fourteen at seven fifteen. PM in the third floor meeting room, Georgetown Town Hall. On Library Street, Georgetown, Mass, consider the following proposed amendments to chapter one six five zoning bylaws of the Town of Georgetown. One six five dash six nine accessory apartments to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by amending the text to one six five six nine accessory apartments. By removing the following text. Section one six five, six nine, part B, the special permit shall be issued to the owner of the property. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by amending the text to one six five six nine accessory apartments by inserting the following text. Section one six five six nine, part A two. Meeting the need for affordable housing by conditioning the special permit to require the acceptance of the apartment. On the state subsidized housing inventory. S H I by the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Requirements may include but not be limited to deed writers and other restrictions, limitations, and reviews. As deemed necessary by D H C D and the permitting authority, permit shall expire if the unit no longer is accepted for inclusion on the S H I. Section one six five six nine, part B, in the case where a special permit is issued on the criteria in section A one. A full and complete copy of the amendment is available at the town clerk's office and the planning office. This was noticed in the Georgetown Record, February seventh and fourteenth.
Thank you, Howard.
This is being sponsored by the Georgetown Affordable Housing Task Force and two members of the task force are in the audience tonight.
Could I ask that they come up and state their name and join us here, please? And are you signed in?
I'm Sean McGee on North Street, one twenty four North Street.
Hi, Sean.
How are you?
We've already met.
I provided, uh, in the packet, it's a, the bylaws, one page. The edited version of uh, the bylaw that shows underlying. The amendments that were proposed. And I included behind that, behind exhibit three. What Frank has provided, um, information provided by D H C D. Frank provided, I think adds a lot of insight into what the intent and purpose behind this bylaw amendment is.
Guys, why don't you, um, why don't you just give us a brief overview of why, um, why you're bringing this forward? Please.
Well, we feel there's a need to uh, um, get some of these accessory or accessory apartments. Uh, really, uh, uh, out in the forefront of the town. As people may have some illegal apartments or you have a special permit where someone came in and. And had requested a uh, uh, an accessory use for a in-law or a parent or a child or something. And then once these, these uh, relatives are gone, they may continue to rent. To someone outside the relative, outside of the uh, agreed upon permit. We feel that if uh, you can include some of the language in the accessory apartments to get these units. On the uh, the S H I list so that we could include them in part of our uh. Our numbers as far as affordable units in town. We think that there's a uh, a great opportunity here to add more units to. The town under the uh, um, accessory apartments.
Right now, the only way you can get an accessory apartment is if you have an in-law situation who you're renting to has to be related to you by blood or affinity. This opens up a second opportunity for people to rent their apartment on an affordable basis, which will allow the town to. Have a dispersed base of affordable spaces in town. It'll probably bring a lot of the illegal apartments now that are currently operating forward, because now they can come in and get a legal permit and rent to somebody. When they didn't have a family member that was gonna move in, now that it opens the world up to them to pretty much anybody else that would qualify on an affordable basis.
And it adds to our affordable housing.
Yeah, that's the intent, the, right, exactly.
Has that been approved by the state?
Yes, uh, if you read, if you go to the the back pages here, the exhibit three, you'll s- you know, if you try to read through this. It'll be about as exciting as this meeting was tonight. I wouldn't be here except that I heard Harry say we're gonna get through this in a half hour, so I ran down. But anyway, if you just basically just kinda look at the description paragraph, that gives you a nutshell what's required. D H C D does recognize accessory apartments, they have to meet their criteria, basically the criteria is a deed writer. That stipulates that the landlord will only rent the apartment on an affordable basis. So there are other requirements, but you know, there's an application process the town has to go through to get the applicant, the apartment onto the uh, the. The housing inventory that has to be approved by a local. It has to be local approval, it doesn't necessarily have to be forty B, it can be any kind of local approval.
So you're talking about the the apartment itself?
Right, so the going to the zoning.
Maybe what I need to do here, I I'm not real familiar with the the accessory. Apartment bylaw. This is probably one of the first times I ever had to read it, I'm not up on that zoning. Tilly, you probably know a little bit more about this, because you were. My understanding is that. If someone wanted, the way the bylaw is right now, if someone wanted to go to uh. Expand their house so that they could have uh, grandma or or a relative move in.
A relative through blood or marriage.
Okay, a relative through blood or marriage, they would have to go to the permit granting authority for this, which is.
Permit granting authority.
And that's the zoning board of appeals. I've been, you're pulling something out of the old one? In in the deletion?
No, what we're doing is giving.
Removing, the special permit shall be issued to the owner of the property.
The, under the, the way that it's, we're proposing it, that will still stay the same if the permit is granted for an in-law situation. It will still be granted and the the permit will expire upon uh, sale of the property, so I have an in-law apartment in my house right now, legal. When I sell my property, the permit goes away, if somebody buys it, wants to have their father-in-law move in, they have to come back and get another permit.
So the permit was issued to you, because you're the owner?
It's not to the land, it's to the owner.
It's not, it's a special permit that goes to the owner. And you wanna remove that?
No, we're gonna leave that in place for that permit on the.
Wait a minute, I'm I'm missing something here.
Okay, you you, it's in either, it's in either situation.
This is what you're removing.
Well, it's in either situation, you're either gonna apply for an in-law apartment or you're going to apply for an affordable apartment. Okay, you're not.
Show me where that is.
Purpose of either, one or two.
Purpose and intent, it is the specific intent of this section to allow accessory apartments, including kitchens. With single-family properties for the purpose of either. Meeting the special needs, housing needs of grandparents, parents, brothers, sisters, or two.
So you would, I would, if you came in to apply for an accessory apartment permit.
My mom is getting on in years and I'm looking at.
Well, yeah, and so you would, you would come in under the by, under the in-law bylaw, okay? You wouldn't come in under the affordable, because uh, under an affordable, you cannot rent to a family member or an employee. You can only, you have to rent to somebody who's not related to you, but on the in-law side, so you're not getting both, you're getting one or the other.
But you can discontinue one and then go to the other. So it's not a forever.
Right, it the.
The owner of, or a future owner of the property can go either way.
Exactly.
At any point in time.
If they wanted to come back in and say, I wanna, I wanna abandon my permit for the in-law apartment, because my my my, my in-law moved away, for whatever reason. I wanna go for the accessory now used for a, an affordable unit, they can come in and do that and they can.
And win that new special permit.
Wait a minute, I'm 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 very confused here, so in other words. Okay, well, wait a minute, hang on a second, so uh, my mom, I want my mom to move in, I go to the Z B A. And I asked them for an in-law apartment permit. They give me a special permit.
Special permit for a a a relative.
Special permit for a relative, I get that, now that special permit runs with the land?
No, that runs with the owner.
So let's just say grandma moved to Florida, that unit becomes. You can't legally rent that. So that just is a part of the housing.
Know that I'm renting that?
Well, that's an issue that we have in town, regardless whether this is here or not, I mean, we have a lot of illegal apartments in Georgetown, people who have apartments that are renting them with no permits.
How many?
I don't know, I mean, I hate to hazard a guess.
Have to go back and see how many special permits were issued.
How many special permits are there out there right now?
I mean, there are quite a few special permits for in-law apartments out there, I I don't know the exact number, I would, my guess would be somewhere so, under a hundred. But probably north of fifty.
Well, what does the Z B A say?
Precisely how many, I mean.
Well, I'm sure if they went back to the records, they could find out, I I don't, I had one, at one point in time, we did a mailing of all the multifamily. Be the one apartment, two or three family apartments or multifamily apartments in Georgetown, because announcing the rental subsidy program. And I had a whole list of them and I wasn't on the list, even though I had an in-law apartment. I got it, Howard put that together from the.
Cause we got it from the assessor.
Right, it doesn't show up on the assessor's records, these, you would have to go through and research the deeds to see if there was a uh, a a permit granted.
So how would we track these?
Well, the if, right now, there is no good way to track them, the affordables will be tracked very closely. Because they have to meet certain standards every year and report on a yearly basis, we'll know exactly what's going on with the affordables.
Because you'd be tracking the.
Well, the monitoring agent would be tracking, would be tracking them, it would be like a forty B. Where you have a monitoring agent who who watches what you're doing and makes sure that you're in compliance.
Who 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 is, is that an agency or?
Generally, yeah, the landlord would provide that, sir, has to provide that as part of the uh. As part of the process. D H C D wants to make sure that the pro- the apartments are being rented to a un- affordable basis. So these would be very closely tracked.
And they would not run with the owner, they'd run with the with the land.
The reason for that is because that's what D H C D requires, they can't.
So there's no flipping back?
No, there is.
You can, yeah, you could abandon it, you could say, we're gonna give it up and then you take the deed writer off and all that happens when you take the deed writer off is it falls off the H S I. It's no longer qualified for H S I.
And you could, you you.
And then you can go back to.
Renting to an in-law.
Or incorporating it into your uh, uh, family home. Let's say that there's no rent though, but now the kids are getting bigger, we're gonna let uh, you know, the teenagers move into the accessory. Or at least uh, have it part of their.
You'd have to go back for that other one.
I I don't think you'd have to go back, if say, say you rent, you built an accessory for grandma, she moved to Florida. And even right under the current zoning, I don't, I don't believe if uh, if you're not renting it and part of the family is actually occupying that. It's not a rental situation, it's not an in-law apartment at that point.
I mean, when a lot of people get caught is when they go to refinance or they're going to sell the house. And the house inspector comes in and says, you've got two kitchens here, this is illegal, you need to get this blessed, because when we were on the zoning board, we used to run into that two or three, four times a year. People coming in a panic, hey, I'm refinancing, I'm closing on Wednesday, can you bless my apartment?
See, other communities have the building inspector. At when people leave or come in.
Go out to inspect the property.
And they don't get an occupancy permit until everything is is correct. I don't know if that process is going on.
Do you need an occupancy permit for an apartment?
You should have one, but I don't know what our building inspector, do you know?
I I I don't, but I do know that if the people come in and they have an in-law apartment that they wanna rent. For an affordable housing unit. It needs to have a building inspector and uh, done to it, because it needs to be D H C D requirements. So that's definitely gonna happen.
Other communities do do this, every, like, like, uh, Long Hill apartment building. When those people in another community, now, I don't know what we're doing. In another community, if you're gonna leave, uh, the the premises move out. You have to notify the building inspector, the tenant, the landlord, notify the building inspector, such and such apartment is gonna be empty. And he would come down, inspect it.
Or a health inspector in some towns would be.
The board of health does that. Oh, all right, so somebody does something. And then you would have some kind of a.
Thing is that, like I, like I said, this is gonna be closely monitored on the affordable side, because the H C D is gonna require, they're gonna require a yearly audit of the. To make sure that the apartment is being rented on it. The in-law has always been an issue, it's probably always gonna be an issue. The only way you're really gonna find out is if, you know, in my situation, let's say my father-in-law moved out and I started renting to a stranger, one of the neighbors decided they didn't like the idea and reported me. That's, you know, that's basically the only way you ever really find out, because you're just, or when I go to sell the house, if there's an issue then, you know.
But you wouldn't notify the board of health, would you?
No, 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 you wouldn't have to.
The board of health get involved with it?
I I never hear, I never heard of that, I don't think that.
I wonder how that.
But I mean, that that's really kind of, at this point, the affordable thing is gonna make it more restricted. You know, I mean, it's not gonna make it less, it's it's gonna be much more controlled than the, than the current bylaw, so. I mean, I'd like to figure out how we could do that and, but I mean, it's really, this is gonna make it better not worse, so. Right, yeah, we can, this is definitely, this is definitely gonna be very, very closely monitored.
And it's good for the town to have the increased affordable housing.
Some of the benefits of this is that it it furthers the housing production plan that was approved about two years ago. Um, another aspect of it is that it isn't gonna become. where in a residential of single-family homes, there's two families. Because the, the limitations of what an, an accessory apartment can be is not gonna allow for a family of four to move in. So, it's gonna be rented to somebody that's-
The current bylaw requires that the, um, basically that the accessory apartment not be more than one-third of the livable space of the total buildings, of the total livable space of the structure.
Or so.
So, it's a two-third, one-third.
Maximum livable floor area for an accessory apartment shall not exceed the greater of either seven hundred square feet or thirty-three percent of the livable floor area of the existing primary dwelling.
So, basically, if you've got a two thousand square foot house and you wanted to put an in-law apartment on, you could still, you, the minimum, the, the seven hundred foot would apply to that.
What's the difference, though, for, between the two-family and an accessory apartment?
Two-family would be even.
One side would be this-
Fifty, you have duplexes.
Doesn't necessarily have to be the same.
The preservation of the single-family characteristics, the accessory apartment shall not change the single-family characteristic of the dwelling, except for the provision of an additional access or egress.
But when you look at our definition for two-family, it just says two units.
Right, but this isn't, this is not a two-family, this is not a two-family approval.
Maybe that definition has to be clear enough.
This, this apartment's accessory to the primary use of the property, which is a residential, a single-family residence.
Why did you wanna remove this, this?
I didn't, we didn't touch any of that.
Well, you gotta, that's what it says here.
Yeah, what, no, but we'll get back, good, this is going back to circle.
Yeah, it does say we're removing that.
You, you said, you're removed-
The special permit shall be issued to the owner of the property.
Oh, that's because-
Yes, but you, you, you need to look at the edited version of the bylaw to see where it was removed from. And it will reinforce what Frank was said, you've got two accessory apartment applications with this. You've got an accessory apartment to an in-law that goes with the owner, and you've got an accessory apartment by law or a special permit that goes with the land. And if it goes with the land, it's affordable housing. So, if you look at that section-
Nothing goes with the land, as far, it only goes with the deed.
Well, the deed goes with the land, so it, you're gonna, under the, DHCD requires that this, 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 this would survive on a sale of the property, so.
That's what's getting, I think that's where I'm having like this, this problem here, that things aren't lining up. Because a special permit, when you sell, when you sell that dwelling, the special permit goes away.
Currently, yes.
Okay, but now we're putting a special permit, we're putting a deed rider-
For only on the affordable, if it's gonna be an affordable apartment, if it's approved, isn't-
That runs with the land.
Right, so it will survive the sale of the property.
But it's still a special permit.
And how can you, how can you revoke it?
Yes, no?
You, you can-
How do you say special permit?
Cause I don't know.
You can't, you can't revoke it unless the person, unless they're not affording, if, as long as they're continuing to rent to an affordable person.
Well, no, no, how, before we said it was reversible.
What do you mean?
You could undo it.
You could, you can, you can go and take it off.
Right.
You, as the property owner, can remove the deed rider.
Right.
So, what keeps the property owner from removing the deed rider?
The only thing's gonna happen, if, if they-
So, wait a minute, I, I have grandma.
Okay, if I can answer the question.
Okay.
If they take the deed rider off, the only thing that happens is it comes off the HSI, we no longer get credit for it as the town.
And they can't be renting it.
And he can no longer rent it as an apartment. Because, because the, in order for it to be affordable, an affordable accessory apartment, it has to be on the HSI. So, the minute you, the minute you remove that deed rider, you come off the HSI, this permit is invalid.
The permit, the, the special permit is null and void.
Right.
But both, both uses, you need a special permit.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, why are you removing the special permit? Shall be issued to the owner of the property, why is that?
It's being written in a later place, that's why.
You don't, they, a person applying for this wouldn't go to the ZBA, right?
Yes.
Yes, they would.
They have to, yeah.
They have to.
There does he be, there does he be-
It will still apply on an in-law situation.
Right, so either one is a special permit.
They're both a special, it's a special permit, it's conditioned, either, you're either gonna be conditioned that you can have an in-law situation, or an affordable situation.
Right.
And then, if you go the affordable route, it requires a deed rider, so you have to accept that deed rider on your property. But you, as the property owner, can get rid of that deed rider anytime you want to, but when you do that, your right to rent, the apartment goes out the window too.
That's right.
So, the ZBA is the, is the granting authority for either of these.
Right, exactly.
I saw a question in the audience, Gary, Gary Fowler from Portisland?
Does an owner have to live there?
Yes.
What if they move out?
In both special permits.
They can't move out?
No.
Even though it goes with the deed?
Wait a minute.
If somebody buys the house, they realize that they have an affordable unit on the house?
They either have an affordable unit, or they, or they come back in for a special permit.
Owner occupancy is required, so.
Wait a minute, so buy, you-
So, if, if you buy-
You've got an in-law apartment.
Right.
You've got, you've got a-
Well, I mean, I've got an accessory, I've got an affordable accessory apartment.
You've got an affordable accessory apartment.
I go to sell my house.
You sell your house to me.
Yes, you've gotta live there.
I have to live there?
Right, to keep, to keep.
Or I have to buy it and get rid of that deed restriction.
Kitchen or whatever it is that constitutes it. And, look at it in a slightly different way, the owner occupancy requirement stops somebody from buying a single-family home with an accessory apartment attached to it, and not living there, and renting out the single-family home, and having two renters in there.
Yeah, this is, this is what I'm saying, I mean, you have one of these apartments.
Right, if I go to sell my house-
Well, wait a minute, what if you just move?
If, if I move-
And you rent?
The single, plus the, and have, your in-law is still in there?
There's still the owner.
If I don't live, yeah, but I'm not occupying the apartment. It's gotta be owner occupied.
How are you tracking that one?
For the accessory apartment?
This is an issue with the in-law, it's not gonna be an issue with the affordable, because the DHCD is going to track that, that's part of the monitoring process.
No, no, I'm talking about-
You have a place of principal residence.
Believe me, there's issues with the in-law situation in town.
No, I'm not talking about the in-law.
Well, on the accessory side, every year, you've gotta show the DHCD that the owner is occupying the other property.
You have to show the owners occupying it, you have to show who's renting the affordable unit.
You have to show that they qualify.
Requirements that they qualify to be renting it as an affordable unit.
And you guys provide the renters list type stuff, is that what I read in here?
Well, we-
Or DHCD.
DHCD will find renters if you can't find them, um, we, one of the things that the housing trust did was they set up a, um, a, uh,
Rental assistance.
Rental assistance program, and we had plenty of people who wanted rental assistance, but we had no, they had no apartments to rent. So, that's one of the, this'll help alleviate that situation as well.
And to add to that, Frank, many of the people in the rental assistance program are looking for a more affordable place to live than where they're living now.
Yeah.
Based on what income, eighty percent?
No, no more than fifty percent of the area median income, which is established by HUD.
But this says eighty.
I think it's eighty for this.
It's eighty for this.
Yeah.
The rental assistance program was a little bit-
But for this, it's eighty percent or less.
You can't get it down to fifty to meet that?
I don't know, we could talk to DHC about that.
Cause, if I remember that report, it seemed like we had very little at the, from fifteen down, thirty percent we didn't have.
Where are you seeing eighty percent?
Um, in the back where we had all the, the reports.
That's DHCD, that's not the bond.
But that, that has to be, that has to be-
I mean, I'm sure DHCD would probably be happy if we made it fifty percent, but I, I don't know, I mean, that's something we'll have to look into. But these are DHCD requirements, not ours.
So, we, we-
You know, the other, the other thing about this is these are gonna be small apartments, you're gonna, they're only gonna, they're only gonna hold one or two people.
Seven hundred square feet's big.
Well, it's, I mean, it's, you're not gonna put a family in there.
You could, a bedroom can be a hundred square feet, be livable.
Yeah, I have a, I have a seven hundred square foot apartment in my house, and it's big enough for two people. I mean, my father-in-law could live there if he had a wife, but he wouldn't have his family there, it would just-
It's a living room, a bedroom, and a galley kitchen.
Yeah, galley kitchen, he has one combination living room, bedroom, he has a, I mean, living room, kitchen, he has a bedroom, a little study area and a bathroom, that's it. You know, we're not gonna get families, a lot of families moving into these things, and the rents are gonna be affordable, because the apartments are small.
Right, I wouldn't wanna see it bigger than seven hundred.
No, no, I mean, some of them will be, if you had a four thousand square foot house, under the bylaw, you could have, under the current bylaw, you could have a thousand-foot apartment.
And that gets dicey.
More than that.
Yeah.
Twelve hundred, something like that.
Twelve hundred, yeah.
Be hard to get my vote for that.
Well, I thought the bylaw said-
That's already part of the new, that's already part of the bylaw now.
The maximum livable floor area for an accessory apartment shall not exceed the greater of either seven hundred square feet or thirty-three percent of the livable floor area.
So, you can, it, it can exceed seven hundred feet.
Of course it can.
Yeah.
Yep.
If I have anything greater than, anything greater than twenty-one hundred square feet in my house.
That was, that's part of the existing law now. We didn't change, we didn't change anything after a certain point, we're just incorporating a different condition to get the, the approval.
So, I'd be inclined to like cap it at seven hundred.
I, I read this as being capped at seven hundred.
That's what it should be.
Shall not exceed the greater of either-
Greater, though.
The greater of, so if you have-
Shall not exceed the greater of either seven hundred square feet or thirty-three percent of the livable floor area.
If you, if you're-
If you're in a four thousand square foot house-
The greater would be a third of that.
Right, and it just says you can't exceed, no, it says you can't exceed-
The greater of the two.
Can't exceed seven hundred, it's basically saying. No, no, it's not saying that, that's what it should say, that's not what it says.
Well, I, I-
No, I'm reading it like you are.
Yeah.
It's wide open.
That's the way it is, cause my apartment's over seven hundred feet, so, you know, that's, you're right, you're absolutely dead on.
That's exactly, yeah, it's, it's worded that way.
It's a greater of either, it's a greater, if you could, if you could get, if the third is twelve hundred, that's a greater, that's greater than seven hundred, yeah. That's, that's kind of confusing.
That's something I'd be cleaned up at a later time.
Right.
Yeah, that's a number that should be subject to discussion, seven, seven hundred.
I would, you know, I'm certain-
Yeah, maybe you could clarify that.
Well, we can also-
Clarified now.
If you guys wanna make a recommendation, we're the Affordable Housing Trust, so, I mean, you know, if you wanted, if you wanted to put something in-
Guys, this is yours, we're either gonna say yay or nay.
Well, I mean, we're, we're here, we're, we're also here to get your input.
I'll be honest with you right now, I'm saying yay, but me personally, I'm saying yay, but I wanna hear from the ZBA.
We've already talked, yeah, we, we've spoken with the ZBA as well.
That's nice, I haven't.
I'm not telling, I'm not putting words in their mouth, I'm just saying we spoke with them, so they're knowledgeable.
And they've got one more meeting before the planning board will probably continue this too.
Yeah, I would hope so.
And I mean, they had a lot of the same concerns you did as far as the enforceability of the in-law situation, you know.
And just the, the, the extra work that they're gonna have to deal with, I mean, this is another, they're a special permit.
This really isn't gonna require anything of them, other than, than the special permitting process, because the monitoring will be done by the monitoring agent that's assigned by DHCD.
So, in other words, the monitoring agents, like, would, would, would the Norino Apartments have a monitoring agent?
Yes, they have two monitoring agents, they have, their real estate management company is the monitoring agent for the new rentals.
Okay.
They're the ones that select the new rentals, and then the state has another agency like CHAPA, or MHFA.
And I heard a long, long time ago that we had trouble finding out information about that, and information about parking or the landing.
Well, the town, under the, I mean, I, I've been extremely involved with forty B, I was a spokesman for the repeal forty B program, process, and I've testified numerous times to the state house on it. That's one of the issues, is that the, the DHCD does want the town involved at all with finances. They're just, they like to keep the towns in the dark, and what's happened as a result of that is that there's probably been about a hundred million dollars worth of fraud perpetrated on cities and towns by developers. And now the D, the inspector general has caught on to it, and probably ten or fifteen million has already been paid back. Um, but that's another whole issue, don't get me started on that.
My concern is DHCD's, well, they're, they're a little busy.
Yeah, well, they, but they make sure that these things are monitored, because it doesn't do any good if they aren't. And they, they, the landlord will be responsible for paying this monitoring agent to come in once a year, and it'll probably be in the hundreds of dollars to do this. They'll come in, they'll verify the incomes, you know, because the, the tenants will be required to provide their income statements and tax forms or whatever, and then they provide that to the monitoring agent, and they just, they say, yeah, you're, it probably gets mailed, and then they look at it, mail it back and say, yeah, you're okay for another year.
Who is this monitoring?
It can be CHAPA, it can be MHFA, there's, uh, there's some other-
There's a, there are people-
They're nonprofit org, yeah, there are people who are, are designated by DHCD to do that type of thing.
I like the last part of this regulation from the state, that a landlord may not increase the rent without their prior approval. And even if the initial rent is lower than the maximum allowable, an increase will be allowed only in proportion to gross in median house, household income as determined by HUD. And if there is any extra payment, it goes to the town that they collect when they shouldn't have. And I thought that was, that's pretty good.
Well, that's true of any forty B or comprehensive permit program, that if there's any excess of profit, it's supposed to refer to the town, and that's one of the problems, is DHC hasn't been watching for that. And these people that have developed these projects have walked away with millions of dollars that should've come to the town, now they've gone back and they're doing forensic investigations, accounting investigations of these projects, and they're finding, County Graffin right now has a fifty million dollar lawsuit against the developer
Yeah.
for excessive profit, and that's how extreme that it is.
And they're gonna do it, uh, of the list every year, which I think that's probably what the town is missing out on. They should've been doing that. Because if I remember right, there's three hundred and sixty-nine apartments in Georgetown, where are they? That was in that housing report.
Yeah.
The, uh, under your affirmative fair marketing and tenants' action section, it says accessory apartments shall be subject to the same affirmative fair marketing non-discrimination policies as other LAUs.
Mm-hmm.
There shall be specific prohibition of discrimination on the basis of all of those things. In general, if a landlord, in a, in a two-family, a landlord can discriminate for any reason they want. Because if, if they live in that, if you live in the house-
As long as they're not getting HUD money.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so, this would really only apply if the tenant has-
Well, it would, it would require that the landlord, that, that, that whoever is the recipient of the special permit now has to abide by the, the, uh, the appropriate, uh, marketing strategies and can't, and he can no longer discriminate. He has to be, he has to be on a fair market basis.
Frank, what, what, what is the penalty for, uh, these, um, people that don't have a permit, but, you know, because it's expired, because they're, they're relative, whatever?
If they have, if they have an illegal, if they have an illegal apartment, technically, it's the three hundred dollars a day. I mean, the, yeah, it's not like any violations, only violation, zoning enforcement officer is the building inspector, he would come out, he would revoke the occupancy permit, and for every day that somebody lived in that space, they could get fined three hundred dollars.
I, I emailed the, the zoning board, I thought that they, they had a discussion about their control, that they didn't have anything. And I had emailed them, and I, you know, and I sent to them, you could create an amnesty program, where some of these people can come forward, have the building inspector just to check it out, to see if it's safe. You know, cause I'm thinking about young people coming in, and they don't really know what's in there, and they go ahead and rent it, and they don't know how safe.
But that's, those are illegal apartments, though.
That's right.
If you have someone come forward, and the end of amnesty, uh, program would allow them to be continuing on with the, an illegal apartment, renting it?
No, then they would come in for their special permit.
Right.
But they could only come in for a-
But they wouldn't be penalized.
But right now, but right now, they can only come in to a special permit for a, a blood relative.
They can only come in, right, right now, but after this, then they'd only be able to come in-
This would be a tremendous incentive for people to come forward, because what they're gonna gain is they're gonna gain rent, okay? And they're also gonna gain improvement in their property value, because if you have an approved, like with my, my house, I can't sell my house as having an in-law apartment, I can sell it as having in-law potential. But, because I'm-
You see that in real estate ads all the time.
Right, exactly, but now if I have, if I was, if I was-
Not legal.
Exactly. If I was in under the affordable, where it's gonna, I mean, it's gonna stay with the property, I could advertise my house as having an affordable apartment, which makes it easier for somebody to purchase that, afford the property, and that's gonna drive the market value.
And the limitation in this area was like a thousand to eleven hundred dollars.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's a decent chunk of change. That almost pays your taxes in this.
Mm-hmm, yeah. But I mean, I think a lot of, I think this is gonna bring a lot of, a lot of the problems out of the woodwork.
I think it will too. Kudos to you guys. I think it's a fabulous idea.
I have a couple of questions here. Gary, did you say, yeah?
Does the owner have to occupy a lot of the two apartments?
Yes. Well, your accessory apartment can only be, uh, you know, one-third of, up to seven hundred square feet.
Actually, the owners of the single family lot upon which the accessory apartment is located shall occupy at least one of the two units.
Yeah, either.
Because the, you know, that could be a situation where he, it may be, remember the time we had the family come in, that I was on the zoning board with Tilly? And we had a family come in, and they were building a new house, and the, the in-laws were, one of the, the father was disabled, and they wanted, they said, look, you know, we want to do an in-law situation. We're agree amenable to that, but we want to do a fifty-fifty, and we told them they couldn't do it because of this, they were basically, right. So, you know, um, they, the owner can occupy, if he, let's, let's say, you know, I'm a, I, I end up living in my house by myself, and I have, I want to have my kids move in, they can move into the house and I can move into the apartment.
I see that as a plus.
Yeah.
It does say the maximum livable floor area for an accessible apartment. Shall, shall not be, exceed the greater of seven hundred or thirty-three percent, but it doesn't say who can live there.
Which one is the accessory apartment?
The thing is, it doesn't say who can live.
I think it does somewhere say that one or the other can live there.
Yeah, it does. You know, you know one can live there.
And, and there was another question we had?
Do you have to partner up with the state for the town to do this? I mean, could, could the town just do this? And would we then still meet because of the, what the people were charging for rent still would help bring our levels down? I mean, that's why.
Yeah, no, we have to, we have to, we have to partner with the state. They have very.
Partner with the state on.
You have to have that deed rider.
You have to have the deed rider.
I just can't believe you can remove the deed rider.
It, it's your property.
Right.
To include the unit.
Because you're, you're also, but, but when you do that, you're giving.
SHI list. You're gonna have your special permit. Need to partner with the state.
But if you found out that, um, there were two apartments in Georgetown, uh, small duplex, each renting for eight hundred dollars apiece, let's say, I happen to probably know where one is. Wouldn't that go towards an affordable apartment?
There, there's rather requirements beyond that, that, that's the silly part of it, like Salisbury.
It's silly, thank you.
Merrimack, you know, I, believe me, Gary, the one thing you and I agree about is DHCD. They, they, I'm, they've got a picture of me there with a lion in the, through the middle of it. They, you know, Merrimack has, uh, I think, uh, last I read, like three hundred, um, trailers, mobile homes.
Yes, yes, I can make.
And they're trying now to get the state to grant, give them credit for those on their HSI, but the state says, in order to, you know, in a nutshell, in order for it to be on the HSI, it has to be, uh, granted through, it used to be through a state or federal agency had to approve it. Now, it's, they've opened it up to the towns as well, so the town has to approve it, you have to go through an approval process. It's either a local initiative program or under forty B, a comprehensive permit, so that's, that's the game that DHCD plays.
I, I think the owner would have to have occupied the bigger side, because the owner's not living in the accessory apartment.
Well, it's a good question to, that we can, we can bring up after the continuation of this. I would hope that we can hear in writing from the ZBA, because I think it's a good idea, but I wouldn't impose something on another board without hearing that the board might be happy to hear it.
I think the building inspector also should have some input here.
I think that's an excellent point, yes. Yeah, let's, um, and let's move it to.
We're, we're, we're hoping, and, and I agree with you that the input should come, and, and just keep in the back of your mind that those are things that can happen in, in subsequent years. I'd rather not make, make, I'd rather not make the good the enemy of the perfect, you know what I'm saying? So, I mean, if, if.
The perfect the enemy of the good.
Yeah, so, whatever that is.
I got it.
Yeah, you got it, I didn't.
Get this on the books.
Get this on the books, and then you can come in, then next year.
If the ZBA is good with that, I, I think I'm all right with it.
I mean, there's a lot of issues, there's a lot of issues that this is not gonna fix, because it's not addressing those issues.
No, it isn't, but we've put it off so long.
No, I think something that needs, definitely needs to be looked at, yeah.
We've got a lot more to go through tonight, guys.
A tragedy can occur in these old houses.
Three more things.
Not being inspected with, with people living in it.
Am I hearing a motion to continue this to?
Will we continue this to March twenty-third?
Off to March twenty-sixth? Twenty, is there a second for that? Second by Tim. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, Karen, to you. Thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you.
I know it seems like I'm pushing you, and I'm throwing you out the door.
That's fine, actually.
I'm more than welcome to stay, hey, with us!
Oh, yeah.
Hey, with us!
Really exciting stuff to discuss.
Yeah, it's, we'll go home and watch you guys.
Oh, yeah, all right.
Yeah, like you'll be watching us, yeah. It'll double. Okay, and now that we've taken care of, um, those. Now that we've taken care of those, we can move to, uh, by law, the first, uh, the definitions need to open a hearing.
Can we do that later?
What's that?
The definitions.
No, we have to, leaves a notice hearing.
Yeah.
These have to open tonight.
And, and the three amendments that are listed.
Let's look at them, let's at least look at them.
Here are advertised in the same public hearing.
Yeah. Oh, okay, I thought. Right, okay, what is that, one and two?
Amendment one, two, and three in your handout.
One, two, and three? Okay, it's all one. It's all one hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so we're opening the hearing.
Are you opening them hearing separately, or all together?
No, that's one hearing.
It's one public hearing notice.
All the time, it's for, uh, by law amendment one, two, and three. Dealing with one sixty-five, seven.
And eleven.
And, and eleven?
Yeah.
Appendix three A?
Yes.
Okay, eleven.
In accordance with the provisions of Mass General, Chapter forty-eight, Section five, the Georgetown Planning Board will hold a public hearing on February twenty-six, twenty-fourteen, at seven fifteen P M. in the third floor meeting room, Georgetown Town Hall, One Library Street, Georgetown, Mass. Consider the following proposed amendments to Chapter one six five zoning bylaws of the town of Georgetown. One six five dash seven definitions, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by removing, inserting, or replacing the existing definitions concerning the following. Plan unit development, remove open space residential, insert medical office, insert registered marijuana dispensaries, insert solar energy facility, insert.
God bless you.
Wind energy facility, insert accessory apartment, insert. One six five dash eleven use regulations and intensity of use schedule, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by mending the text to one six five eleven use regulations and intensity of use schedule by removing the following uses as follows. Other uses, commercial radio and television, signs, temporary structures, pipe organ making, housing for elderly, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by mending the text to one six five eleven use regulations and intensity of use schedule by inserting the following uses as follows, sorry. Business uses, registered marijuana dispensaries, pipe organ making, signs, solar energy facility, wind energy facility. Rural uses, temporary structures, industrial uses, commercial radio and television transmission. Full complete copy of amendments is available at the town clerk's office in the planning office.
Thank you, Howard.
Published February seventh and the fourteenth in the Georgetown Record.
Thank you. Um, starting right off with the first one.
And to help with this, when we get to the table, which I couldn't read, uh, we'll be able to see it on the screen. All right, so, under text.
Under text, we're getting rid of planned unit development. Great idea, we haven't had that for years, right? Lot of discussion on that, right?
To come out of the definitions, um, because it's no longer in the bylaw.
Right, no more, no discussion on that one. What about adding definitions now? We're adding a definition for accessory apartment. It's called a self-contained living area including kitchen within a single-family property for a relative or relatives through blood or marriage, or for rental as an affordable housing unit.
These are, again, are definitions.
Right. Now, can I make a suggestion here? These changes. One and two, and I guess three, on the warrant at town meeting need to come after the votes for the bylaws. Because if you make these changes before you vote the bylaws, and one of those bylaws goes down in flames, you've gotta go back to these.
Yeah.
And that's why I took them up in this order tonight.
Yeah.
Okay? Right? Okay.
I'll coordinate, the warrant's still open, so I can coordinate.
Yeah, this is, this is means to flip the, the order, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, if affordable housing accessory apartment, um, bylaw should not get approved at town meeting, then I would think that we could go back, we could, from the floor, amend this. And pull that as an affordable, for, or for rental, as an affordable housing unit, you could pull that out. But with that, a self-contained living area including kitchen, kitchen with a single-family property, within a single-family property for a relative through blood or marriage.
Right.
Right?
I don't like that as definition at all. It needs, it needs to work. I think that.
Okay, what, what would you suggest, Tilly?
Yeah, I, I had, uh.
At ten minutes to ten. What would you suggest?
Well, then why don't you continue until next March, what is it, twenty-sixth? And we'll go through that again.
You're gonna have another night like this on March twenty-sixth.
Do you wanna hear what I said?
Absolutely, well, how would you change it?
Well, then why aren't you, uh?
Go for it. Make it happen.
Tell me what time it is. I, well, I think that i- in this one, it should have, um, it, and to begin with, it doesn't say anything about, uh, uh, you have or for rental as an affordable housing user. So, in that, in that definition, in your bylaw, it doesn't say or for rental as an affordable housing.
No, it doesn't say or, but it, it's, it's broken.
Doesn't it, or something like that? So, ours, for one, one thought I had was that this should be two different bylaws. An affordable accessory and a regular accessory, so that there would be a, a clear line of division there. But you have it all into one, which I thought was not that clean, and, um.
I understand what you're saying.
That's what I.
I understand what you're saying. That, that, that hearing has been continued, so we need to de- deal with the definition under this one now. We're talking strictly definition. How would you, what makes you comfortable with the definition here? That this board can recommend to the Board of Selectmen?
Well, for one thing, it was, uh, I should, I had, uh, the first sentence, a self-contained living area including kitchen. Within a single family, I think in there should be owner-occupied property.
Okay, okay.
For a relative through blood or marriage. And, or rather, rent it to, if you wanted to leave war in there, rent it to non-family members. Period.
No.
No, as an affordable unit.
That's the whole point.
With a special permit.
As an affordable unit, right.
A special permit from the zoning board of appeals?
Yeah.
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 Yeah, that would be better.
Like that? Work for you, blood?
I, I would take out special permit, because that's outlined in the actual bylaw. All your other definitions, don't, you don't need it in the definition section.
No, you don't.
Okay.
But that's, that's what I think it should be.
A self-contained living area including kitchen within a owner-occupied.
Within a single-family owner-occupied property.
Within a what?
Single family.
You have, within a.
A owner-occupied, comma, single-family property.
God bless.
For a relative or relatives through blood or marriage, or for rental to.
Non-relative.
A.
Non-relative?
Non, uh, uh.
Non-family members, non-relatives.
Okay, still with it?
So, as an affordable housing unit. I, I'm just not sure what problem that solves by, by adding that in the second, the second part. I don't, I mean, I don't wanna beat it to death. It, well, non-relative would, would be unrelated, right?
Well, but for one thing, there's an explanation for a relative. Now, we're also saying they also can be non-relatives. We're saying that accessory apartment, the one bylaw can, is, is good for both. And the definition has to coincide with what our bylaw has written. So that's why.
Doesn't hurt to put it in there.
Yeah, I think it does. I don't think, no, add it in there.
It clarifies it.
Yeah.
Under one.
I like it, yeah.
All right.
And then.
We like medical office?
The medical office, I think, should be, um, a suite of rooms, including a laboratory, where physician or group of medical practitioners.
Practitioners.
Provide health services for patients, period.
What's the matter with receive and treat patients on an ongoing basis and otherwise provide?
Well, because I don't know what, what ongoing basis, why, that's unnecessary. You know, you don't need that in there.
Oh, I think you do need it in there. Uh, receive and treat patients on an ongoing basis, that's a doctor's office. And otherwise provide health services to consumers is a laboratory.
Well, what we have, it.
Are you gonna consider a lab a medical office?
Well, we do.
Does, does it, does medical office have to have a lab?
It's including a laboratory.
No, they, some of them don't have labs.
I mean, if I, if I. Some do, some don't have labs. Right, but you're saying that it's, the suite of rooms. Receive and treat patients on an ongoing basis, that's a, that's a family doctor's office. Where you go in, you got an appointment, you see the doctor.
But you also, we have, we have.
And otherwise provide health services to consumers.
We also have in Duncan Donuts, which they just did a ZBA, uh, term, they called it medical offices, and it's a rehab. It's not, it's not a lab, it's not, um.
A rehab where, is where you receive and treat patients.
Where you're doing, yeah, you're doing exercising, they have exercising equipment in there, but you're not doing any blood tests for lab or, or anything like that.
So why do you wanna take it out?
Because.
The implication, when, when I read it, I, I read it that it was a suite of rooms that had to include a laboratory.
Yeah.
That's, that's the way I read it, and.
Inclusive of a laboratory. In other words, if, if I'm, if I want a la, if I want to open a laboratory, and I come to you, Mr. Building Inspector, and I, I hand you my application.
Right.
You can allow that laboratory under a medical office use.
Instead, instead of saying including a laboratory, maybe possibly including a laboratory, or, it doesn't have to have a laboratory, but that sort of says it has to have a laboratory.
Yeah.
Does it have, does it have to have restrooms?
That may include, that may include a laboratory.
Does it have to have restrooms? Does it have to have, or, or, by stipulating that.
Right.
We're kind of starting a list of, these are the kinds of things that it has to have. It has to have restrooms too. Do we need to state that? I mean, no, I don't think so. That's why I don't think we need to state that includes a laboratory. Because if it has a laboratory, that's fine. If it doesn't have a laboratory, that's fine too. The other reason why I tried to be careful about wording otherwise provide health services to consumers is because there's some overlap with the medical marijuana dispensary, right?
Mm-hmm.
Medical offices and how those are perceived. It's a dispensary, it's.
But that has its own special permit.
Yeah.
So, are we not happy with that? What, what's, what's the final wording on that one, guys?
Well, maybe, you know, Harry, uh, Howard would work on that, but I don't, I don't think it should be the way it is, Bill.
Okay, so we can't come to any kind of a.
Suite of rooms that may include a laboratory where a physician or group of medical practitioners receive and treat patients on an ongoing basis and otherwise provide health services to consumers.
See, I think.
Let's see if you can tweak that, Howard. Let's see.
Receive it and ongoing basis, all of that is jarbin. I think that's, you know, that's not necessary.
Maybe, maybe you could tweak it.
I would really, I'd, I'd like to get a lot of this resolved tonight.
Well, we're not gonna, by getting hung up on this one. Open space residential development, method of planning residential development that conserves open space.
This one here I probed in, my idea was to put, start, leave, uh, method of planning, remove that. Put a residential cluster development, it put in cluster development that conserves open space and everything else is the same, but the question I had was at the end, adequately compensating landowners? What does that mean?
Yeah.
Adequate compensating landowners is allowing for density bonus.
Well, then you gotta say that.
I don't have to say it.
Well, no, I wouldn't, didn't know what it was.
Yeah, I was kinda looking at that myself, um.
Well, leave it out.
Strike, starting at the word, and?
I, I'm, this definition is largely taken from many organizations in the, in the, uh, planning association and things like that, so.
You can, you can put a period after construction, and it works.
Yeah.
Registered marijuana dispensaries, uh, that's taken right out of, uh, that's right, that's the way it's gotta be, right, Howard?
Yeah, I just wanna go back to open space residential development. I don't think clusters should be included in. Yeah, I just wanna go back to open space residential development. I don't think cluster should be included in there because not all open space residential development is clustered.
The only ones we've ever had in town is, so that's why I, I don't, I'm not familiar with any other kinda.
That's an old term.
OSRD.
Cluster is an old term.
I know, but it, it does.
It was replaced with open space residential development. They changed it, they modified it.
Is, is this, is this usage, open space residential development, a development? Or is, is development a process? Is it the methodology?
It's the bylaw.
Well, no. OSRD.
OSRD is a bylaw.
It, and, and is actually more of a process. Okay, alright, that, I'm satisfied. Than a definitive subdivision. The, the reason why it, it's being brought here is because it's in your bylaws, but it's not defined. And that's, that's perfect, that's perfectly legit.
That's actually replacing planned unit development, which the bylaw did.
Would it be worthwhile to put in paren's OSRD? Because we, it's.
Sure.
It's an acronym that we use.
Free acronym in there. I like it. Everybody good with registered marijuana dispensaries?
It's pretty much boilerplate.
Yep. Solar energy facility. And again, I gotta, it's ground-mounted. And you're saying it's only ground-mounted, and I can't go for that.
Alright, take ground-mounted out.
Ground or roof-mounted? Ground or roof-mounted?
No, I'll just take it out, a solar photovoltaic installation.
Okay. Okay, go ground-mounted, right? Wind energy facility? I'm alright with it.
May Mr. Chair?
Yes, sorry, again.
Would you, since you guys took that one through to June, do you wanna just not put it in here this time?
I lost you, Gary, I'm sorry.
This is the bylaw discussion.
About the accessory apartment bylaw, in case it didn't get passed, were you not putting the, it looks like you're not putting it in one on the warrant? Because you continued your hearing to June?
Yeah, but you know what? It wouldn't hurt to have a definition of that.
Are you just going on what you were looking to do before with the.
Yeah. Would, 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 would it hurt? Do you think anybody, alright?
It's being considered in a sensitive use schedule as well.
Yeah, so we, we, we might wanna get it on there, even though we don't have anything to back it up. Under the comments, I don't know if that's gonna be replicated or anything. But number two, add definitions of a use that are not in chapter one sixty-five zoning laws but. And then, see right at the very bottom.
Yeah, but doesn't need to be in there.
Okay, cool. Is, is everybody good with that now? Alright, and Howard's gonna go back and work on medical office. Give us a little tweak on medical office.
Yeah.
So that we can see it with a fresh head the next time, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's one and two, right?
Right.
And now this is three.
The Third Amendment is, is fairly straightforward.
Howard, that's different from this.
This, this is the public hearing notice.
Okay.
It's, it's the cer, exactly the same language, though.
I'm seeing under business.
You got an error then, I think, if it's the same. The housing for the elderly, you have a P in IB district, should be A.
Housing for.
That's what we're removing, right?
You're removing it anyhow.
What?
You're removing housing for elderly.
But you're putting it down here, and it's same P as down there.
Where am, putting it down where?
Residential uses.
You have it under residential A and IB.
And that is only, that is the state housing for the elderly. That's, that's what, that's, you should put in the state, I think. That may give developer the idea that an OSRD can go into.
Yeah, what, what is the definition currently of housing for the elderly?
We don't have one.
Why don't we add that then? If we're, if we're moving this, why don't we add it?
Housing for elderly in our current one-six-five has a P under RA and an A under all the others.
Right.
But this is shown under the IB district, it's showing that it has a P for some reason. And on, on this sheet here, well, that's one thing, but on this sheet here, what you're, what we're inserting on this sheet is registered medical dispensaries, not registered marijuana dispensary.
Right, it, it, it was, is advertised as marijuana.
Typos aside, how do we feel about this? Regardless of what we're pulling out, what we're taking out, we're getting rid of it.
Just to clarify, the, the biggest part of this exercise is that you currently have in your use schedule, a category of other uses.
And we're getting rid of that.
And you're just moving them to more appropriate locations, and, and I've spoken with the zoning code enforcement officer, and he gave advisement about temporary structures and, and, and under rural uses and commercial radio under industrial.
Okay, that's where he'd like to see them.
Yeah.
Good for me. Pipe organ making, I'm not even gonna comment.
That was, that was the one that just fascinated me.
Yeah.
That we are very restrictive about where going, where we're gonna put pipe organ.
Sort of slid through, but it makes pretty sense.
Fine with me. I think this is good.
Signs got changed, got, got changed to business uses, right? Solar energy facilities and wind energy facilities are under business uses, and they're anywhere and everywhere. Permitted use in all the districts. Medical marijuana is under this, allowed in the C, commercial C, commercial B, commercial A, in the I, the industrial A and the industrial B district by special permit, by the planning.
I kinda thought that.
And it's excluded everywhere else.
The solar and the wind?
Solar and the wind, yep.
Where you got it permitted? I thought maybe there should be a P slash S, so that they know that it's a site approval, that you, you know, you do need some kind of process. You just can't go to the building inspector and get a permit. You need that site approval. What, what is the rest of you think about that?
I think that signs are permitted everywhere, but you have to get an approval for those, through the building inspector.
I'm talking solar and wind.
Well, the thing is, everything that's, that's permitted, you still need a building permit, and you have to go to the building inspector. And he's the one that enforces.
Yeah, they do have.
Permit it, permit it doesn't mean you have it by right. You still have to jump through hoops.
Yeah, you still have to go to the building inspector.
Whatever that use that you want, that you want, and you have to follow the rules.
Yeah.
That have been.
Established by the other bylaws.
Right. I mean, you can't put too much, and this is just an intensity of use schedule here.
Yeah.
Okay, everybody good with this?
Yes.
Yeah.
So Howard has like a couple of little typos to clean up? And then, we can pretty much fly through this on the twenty-sixth. Motion to continue the hearing made by, by Tim?
Secondo.
March twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen, seconded by Bob. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Did I hear someone say that, well, anybody have any, anything they wanted to bring up?
Yeah, I have one, just, it should be a quick one.
Go ahead, it's only seven passes.
I missed the residential solar thing. You guys discussed the residential solar tonight, is that right?
We discussed solar, and there was a specific section in it that pointed out that roof-mounted is not regulated. Getting late, I'm losing it. Not regulated for residential.
Because in our first, last, first discussion of solar, you were concerned about what the maximum size of a roof-mounted unit should be.
I'm not, no.
Good.
Thank you.
That was easy, last one.
I'm trying to calculate how much time that I'm not anymore, just.
Really? Anything else? Anybody? Wendy, anything?
Oh, that, I mean, I just, I think on the agenda is.
Nothing.
Oh, no?
Well, but there is any other concern of a planning board member?
Because I had, I had sent a. The twentieth was a cutoff date for air opinions on the zoning board hearings scheduled for, I think it's the fourth of March for Dunkin' Donuts, and I had submitted something as a citizen, not as the board, and I thought that the board should have a little discussion about it and give your comments as well. And my concern with this is that it's going to extend out to a home that was built in eighteen forty-one, and, and, and the business wants to put a parking lot and move their septic on this property downtown. And I think to preserve the downtown, we've gotta step up to the cause, to the plate, I should say, step up to the plate. And really say, you're changing the character by granting this request.
Are you talking about that little dump next to the Dunkin' Donuts plaza across from the BP station?
No, the other side, the other side. The six.
Yeah, where Dunkin' Donuts is. Looking at Dunkin' Donuts.
No, no, the other side.
Looking at Dunkin' Donuts, one house to the left.
The white, big white house.
Expand into that area.
House of F. L. O. Z.
Knock down the house and use it for the use.
And particularly, we've already lost, you know, like, like, well, a couple of months there, we lost two very historic houses on North Street, and it didn't seem to be much to do about it. And, and now we're gonna.
What two houses on North Street were historic?
With the planning.
The houses was on there, I don't know the numbers now, but they, but they're gone. And, you know, you drive by and you say, holy, something's missing here.
And one of them burned down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
True.
The other one was.
Yeah.
Hopeless. I looked at buying that to rehab.
Did you?
Oh, that was a nice.
If the historical commission.
Well, you're interested in rehab, so, you know, this is what I'm concerned about. That saves the character of this town. Is preserving these old structures.
The historical commission has a bylaw in place that lets them delay the demolition of any historic structure.
That's not, that's not our.
Not really mine.
I don't have anything to say about that. I mean, you can say.
But I think we should say, say something because our responsibility as the board, planning board, is to do the master plan. Every time we've done the master plan, surveys are done by the residents. And they are concerned about preserving the character of the town. And by us not following through with what the, the people want based on, on the finalized master plan, then I think we're reneging on our duties.
Well, we have a little issue there.
There's nothing in the master plan about trying to save.
Well, actually, the reality of it is, there is stuff in the master plan about that.
Absolutely.
There's something called the cultural and historical map that was created.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, sixty does not, sixty Main Street, which is the subject, doesn't show up on that map.
But it does. Excuse me, I sent you an email about that.
That is not on the map, Tilly.
Because the state did not update their map.
No, wait, wait, that's a different subject.
No, that is the subject.
No.
Because.
There is a map in the master plan.
Yeah.
It's created by Meramec Valley Planning Commission. When you unfold this map and you look, it's not there.
My rack map.
No, Macarist is a database maintained by the state. It's the state cultural and historic resource.
Well, that's where that one came from, that's in there.
I checked it, I pulled it, it is not on there.
Because that was drawn from the state's, state's data center.
That is the state's data center. What was drawn?
And I'm telling you, the state did not get all of the last survey that the historical commission used CPC money for. Two districts are downtown that they have completed and Elm Street. But the state did not update their database, which is that same map that's in the open, the open space, I think it is, and then it's also.
That map was, that map was generated from data provided by the historical commission.
Well, there, if you go to the meeting, I'm sure that those, I hope that they'll be there present, they'll bring in a copy of the survey that, that house is, I think it's Richard Kenny.
Eighteen forty-four.
House eighteen forty-one.
Eighteen forty, okay.
And they give a, they give, it's quite interesting to read it. All that survey, there's like four pages of information about how historical this is. And it tells you the families it owned.
And that's up to the historical commission to decide if they want to try to preserve it. Go for it.
Comment on some of what Tilly's saying. If you read the Affordable Housing Production Plan, I think is the name of it. The town had done several years ago.
The Housing Production Plan.
Housing Production Plan. One of the things in there, it talks about with having something to prevent tearing down of homes. Except Georgetown doesn't have that.
It's wrong. We have the, the demolition delay bylaw.
You mentioned historic, I think.
Yeah, and the historical commission is the one that.
Yeah, but I mean, who decides if it's historic? I think that might be the.
Any building over seventy-five years old, according to that bylaw, and you can pull it up if you want.
Well, that, that's great.
Before you can tear it down, before you can get your demolition permit from the building inspector, you must get a permit from the, this is supposed to be.
But this mentions having a delay.
They can only delay it for so long.
There's supposed to be a hearing held, according to that bylaw, and the commission rules on the demo, on the not demo. And if they say, no, you can't demo it, then there's a six-month delay to the process. And that gives the town and historical folks time to pick it up and move it up.
But I guess what I'm asking is, there was also something in there about zoning to keep some affordable housing in, in town also, and I don't know who moves these things forward. Would it be Board of Selectmen, Planning Board?
Historic Selectmen. Selectmen.
Yeah.
What, what are you talking about? Affordable housing?
No, no, to, to add to what Gary, you're, you're saying, and bring, try to bring all these different pieces together.
Yeah.
The historic commission may say, no, we're not gonna allow the permit, you got six months to find out what we can do. The Affordable Housing Trust could say, well, here's a unit that could be rehabbed, we gotta find a place for it. This is in the, in the, in an ideal world, and then you can pick up this historic structure, preserve it, you gotta find another location in town for it, rehab it, and you create an affordable housing unit out of it. Right?
We have all that processes moving.
No, it, 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 it could be a process, but there isn't a policy, there isn't a bylaw that outlines it.
I just wanna say one thing, if I can say it. If the historical commission thought that was such an important house, how come they didn't wrap a historic district around it? And I'll leave you at that.
They did.
No, they didn't.
They made East Main Street.
What town meeting did you go to where a local historic district was adopted?
They just finished the survey, and those are the two streets.
That was a survey.
It's, but it's.
Is it on the warrant? Oh, it's not on the warrant?
I just wanna add, handed out at tonight's meeting was a meeting.
I'm sorry, I just heard a motion made by, by Tim. Is there a second?
Uh, yes.
For discussion? Any, any other comments?
Just look at your meeting supplement, and look at the citizen planner training. Pick out some seminars and let the planning board, the planning office know what you'd like to attend. You did this last year.
Thank you, Howard.
Yeah.
On the motion to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think that, that the groans mean that we're adjourned at ten-twenty PM. Sorry for the long meeting. Thank you. Well, you know, you were late, that's why.
You guys were cuckoo-booing on here.